...for April 18th. And the trees are starting to bud, which is always a very exciting time in spring. Anyone have any announcements? Slukman-Daly?
Yes, I did want to talk about, because you've, many of you have heard me sort of fussing at the police department because it was so difficult to cross Beacon Street during the marathon after they extended barricades all the way up Beacon Street. And I feel that, you know, there's many people, parents with young children, others trying to use the T, and somebody gave me the example earlier today that they knew someone that was trying to get over to the hospital area and cross Beacon Street. So, there are a number of reasons why people need to be able to cross Beacon Street. And I just want to say that they have worked hard on that issue. And I was down watching at the Tappan Street where they had a crossing. And they had a clever method of using ropes to direct the runners to one side of the street, and they would let the pedestrians come out into this narrow little box in the center of the street. And then they'd move the ropes so that the runners were on the other side of the pedestrians, and they'd let them cross. And it was highly successful. And I saw, I mean, there were lots of people queuing up to cross. So, I just was standing there for half an hour, 40 minutes, and I must have seen four groups cross from one side to the other. So, I just want to applaud our public safety crew and, in general, the marathon seems to have gone very well. I was also, you know, sad it's necessary, but glad to see the DPW heavy-duty trucks blocking a lot of access to Beacon Street so that nobody could do what they've done in France and run a big truck or something into the crowd. So, all in all, I want to give compliments for the marathon as it went through Brookline.
I also want to thank our Public Works employees. I think they did a great job cleaning up after the race very quickly as well and opening the streets up in an efficient way. So, not only public safety, but also Public Works.
See, Slukman-Daly, 12 years on the board, and you actually accomplished something.
Something substantial to show, boy. Yeah, and I understand that this was, The Globe put some video on its website of this crossing. And apparently, it's like, it's viral, trending, whatever you say.
New age.
Yes. People are looking at it everywhere.
Slukman-Heller, you have some exciting news for us?
I do have exciting news for us. Heard this morning that the Department of Public Utilities, DPU, has approved our community aggregation plan. So, I have not, it's a several-page document. I have not had time to go over it line by line with our broker and Maria Morelli and others. But I did notice that the three, our three-tiered approach is intact, meaning we will have a basic level, a green level, and then an all-green level.
Yeah. This is for people that don't know, you can choose your electricity through this plan within the town, and you can have your electricity come from greener sources than it currently does.
Right. And we don't, everyone who is on Eversource will be getting, we will be sending out opt-out notices presumably by the end of May. In the meantime, we have to do an RFP, and request for proposal, and select a supplier. So, that would happen presumably in early to mid-May. And we will, at that point, know the rates that Eversource will be using in July. And so, we will be able to compare our rates once we know who supplier that we pick, and once we know Eversource's rates for July, we'll be able to give people a beat on the rates. So, I'm optimistic that it's going to get done. My, our goal was not to do it over the summer, in July and August, and give people, the opt-out period will, in essence, be June. So, I'm really pleased about that. And, you know, we have left some scrambling, some work to do, but we'll get it done.
Well, congrats.
...than otherwise.
We will have a positive effect on the climate. Which is fantastic.
Right.
But we should remind people that even if they want to opt for the rate, the lower option, that is going to be similarly priced to Eversource, you want them to join the aggregation anyway.
We do.
Because that helps the whole.
We do. And we're hopeful, we don't know the rates yet, so we're hopeful that we'll either match or be below, you know, on the basic. And that the green, 50 percent green, in essence, will be lower than, our goal was $7 a month, and we want it to be lower than that. And the all-green, it's hard for me to say at this point, but...
And by seven a month, you mean seven over what you would pay at Eversource's rate?
Seven over what you had been paying, yes. But what rec prices have been, new one-fu crisis have been coming down. So, we expect that number to go down as well.
Great.
Okay. Any other announcements or anything else anyone wishes to tell us about? Public comment. Harriet, you'd like to speak about the ICE detainers?
I don't want to be the only one. My assumption is that you're...
No, I don't think you will be. But what I would suggest is, why don't you wait for that item? And so then, because I think we'll be doing an intro, and maybe that may even answer your questions, so then you'll be doing, speaking in context. Mr. Leppson? Five minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was here on Friday, and, well, should I identify myself any further?
Sure.
Yeah, so Robert Leppson, Thorne Dyke Street resident, resident of Brookline for 29 years at this point. Was here on Friday and kind of sat and watched and observed and was kind of outraged. I wanted to get up and speak, but I didn't. There was a lot of ruckus, obviously, that was going on, and I just felt it would be better to wait, collect my thoughts, and express in a more directed way at this point. So, I guess a few items that I just want to communicate to the board. And I do this sincerely, and I do this not out of, you know, wanting to embarrass anybody or throw anybody under the bus or anything along those lines. But as a longtime resident and seeing how things unfolded on Friday, I was embarrassed, and I was very, very disheartened by what actually occurred. Certainly, I was not pleased with the outcome, but I was also extremely disappointed with the process that kind of unfolded and what sort of transpired. You know, the decision to take comments after the vote was mind-boggling to me. The decision to actually take the vote while the uproar was actually going on, and I would say, I don't know, probably the vast majority of people didn't even realize the vote was actually occurring when it was occurring. I was sitting relatively close, and I saw what was actually happening, so I did notice it. But all of that, just, it felt, I hate to use these words, it felt authoritarian, it felt autocratic. It felt like also that everybody's minds were made up prior to the meeting. And it also exhibited to me a lack of responsiveness to the public that the board really showed. And I guess, you know, we're your constituents. We vote for you. And the comment that was made, you know, that we're, you know, the citizens and the population were at the top of the org chart. You guys represent us, we elect you. And the fact that all of this sort of happened the way it did happen felt like we're not at the top of the org chart. And that is really, really disheartening for a concerned citizen who has spent, you know, the vast majority of his life here in this town. I kind of, when I went home, I felt sick to my stomach, and I was kind of like out of commission for the course of the rest of the court, you know, of the day. I imagine several of you probably had similar feelings seeing sort of what transpired. It was not a pretty picture, and I just felt like I needed to get that out there to you folks. And hopefully, a situation like this won't occur again, that there won't be a need to fire public servants in this particular fashion. But if something as controversial and as important to the community ever does come up, hopefully, the process will be really, really different than what it was. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to say one thing at my peril, is we were operating under a lot of constraints under civil service law, which sets forth a process, and we were following that process. And, you know, I'm just as unhappy with the way it turned out as you are, but, you know, our hands were tied, so I just wanted to get that out there.
Would you say what that constraint is?
Civil service law sets out certain procedures under which discipline occurs. It sets forth the procedures for a hearing, and then procedures for decisions on, from the hearing officer. And all that is done according, on the record. It's usually done in executive session, but employees do have the right to request an open session, and that's what happened. And the law is very prescriptive in how those things take place. So, I think there was a misunderstanding that that was a public hearing. It wasn't a public hearing. And, you know, we were operating within the way the law set it up, so it just didn't work for that situation.
I just want to add a couple of things. We also, those employees are not only suing the town, they're suing us personally. We were advised not to make public comments and response. I will say, I think, is the, is the report from the hearing officer available? Where can people find it? You can find that online. And I would suggest that, you know, I know people weren't listening Friday, but that you might actually go read that report and get a fuller picture of what actually happened.
I think it's also important that you think about the process and what you're suggesting that we do in the future when disciplinary actions come before this board. I mean, it can't be that this board puts an employee in the position of having their rights determined by whoever shows up at the Board of Selectmen's meeting. That would be unfair. Because we did not notice the meeting as such an opportunity, giving the other side, whoever that may be, an opportunity to express their view. So, the criticism that we voted before people had a chance to express their opinions, I think really is unfortunate because it doesn't consider the issue of the process and the fairness that has to go into not just this situation, but any future disciplinary actions. And, you know, like Slukman-Daly suggested, I really urge you to read the materials online, not just the report, but also the exhibits, including the officer's exhibits, and make a judgment as to what is really the way to look at this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Leppson. We're going to hold the minutes. Next item is a question of approving a contract for roadway improvements for $673,933. Mr. Ditto.
Good evening. This contract involves reconstruction of two intersections and one roadway. We'll be reconstructing intersection of Blake Road and Tappan Street. We'll be doing the intersection of Gardner Road, Blake Road, and Rossen Road. And we'll be reconstructing Greeno Street from Washington to Davis. As you can see in the memo that we did, we received seven bids of the three lowest being stated in the memo. And if you look, they're pretty good bids, they're all locked right in there. Makes us very happy to see that. A little bit of Newport Construction is familiar with the town. He's worked here for quite a while. We actually called him in to go over a schedule for construction. Should you approve this contract tonight, noise received will go out tomorrow, and he anticipates starting the first week in May. That being said, we'll start up at the top of the hill at Gardner Road and Tappan and Rossen, and keeping away from the school. And when the school finally gets out, we'll move down to Greeno Street, so that'll probably be the last week in June before we get there.
Okay.
No.
Sorry.
Just want to say one thing. We did check with National Grid, and they're okay with these three locations as far as not having any leaks.
I'm glad that we didn't have to ask.
Yeah, I'm getting the picture now.
Any questions from the board?
Is this simply resurfacing, or are we doing engineering work as well?
Well, actually, the intersection at Gardner, Rossen, and Blake will be excavated and a rotor reinstalled at that intersection, so that's a little bit more invasive than just milling and overlaying.
And was consideration given to what I think is the pending complete streets policy, or is it sort of not incorporating the toolkit of complete streets?
This one, this, these streets meet the complete street criteria, so we're moving forward with it. It was scheduled last year, but we didn't get to it. It was scheduled before the complete streets policy was accepted.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I will move that we approve and execute the contract for roadway improvements at three locations with Newport Construction Corp. of Nashua, New Hampshire, in the amount of All those in favor, please say aye. Slukman-Daly?
Aye.
Slukman-Franco?
Aye.
Slukman-Heller?
Aye.
Slukman-Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ditto. And we have a bunch of temporary licenses, and I'm going to make the motion in omnibus fashion. So, I will move that we grant temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage sales license to Pine Manor College for corporate dinner reception to be held on Thursday, April 20th, from 6:00 to 9:30 at 400 Heath Street. I'll also move that we grant temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Olive Connection for a meeting. That's a wine class to be held on Thursday, April 27th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at 1426 Beacon Street. I'll also move that we grant a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage sales license to Federation of American Societies of New England for a dinner to be held on Saturday, April 29th, from 7:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. at 162 Goddard Avenue. I'll also move that we grant a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage sales license to St. Constantine and St. Helen Greek Orthodox Church for a concert to be held on Saturday, May 13th, from 7:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. at 162 Goddard Avenue. I'll also move that we grant a permit to serve alcoholic beverage on town property, non-sales beer and wine only, to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a wedding reception to be held on Saturday, April 29th, from 2:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at 15 Newton Street. And I'll also move, two more, one more, that we grant a permit to serve all kinds alcoholic beverage, to serve alcoholic beverage on town property, non-sales all kinds, to Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a wedding reception to be held on Saturday, May 6th, from 3:30 to 11:00. And I've reviewed all these applications, and the police department has approved them all. All those in favor, please say aye. Slukman-Daly?
Aye.
Slukman-Franco?
Aye.
Slukman-Heller?
Aye.
Slukman-Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And last item on our miscellaneous calendar is question of approving the application of Liquor Express LLC, doing business Coolidge Corner Wine and Spirits, 1300 Beacon Street, for the appointment of Shumman C. Patel as the alternate manager. And his application does appear to be in order. Any questions on the application?
I want to thank Liquor Express for, or, excuse me, Coolidge Corner Wine and Spirits for submitting an alternate manager application. We always like to see that on our liquor licenses. It leads to a better quality of life for the manager and an additional check for us here in town. So, thank you to Coolidge Corner Wine and Spirits for submitting the application.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the application of Liquor Express LLC, doing business, as Coolidge Corner Wine and Spirits, 1300 Beacon Street, for the appointment of An Shumman C. Patel as the alternate manager. All those in favor, please say aye. Slukman-Daly?
Aye.
Slukman-Franco?
Aye.
Slukman-Heller?
Aye.
Slukman-Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And on to our main calendar. First item is the question of filling a senior office assistant vacancy in the Treasury Department. Faison?
Good evening.
This is your...
Austin Faison, Assistant Town Administrator. So, in this case, an employee named Kelly got poached by our school department to work on the fifth floor. She got a good opportunity there, so she's transitioning. So, we have an opening for a senior office assistant position downstairs in the treasurer collector's office, and we're looking to hire soon to get them fully staffed down there.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
No, but I think we should retaliate.
So, I'll move that we do what? That we authorize the filling of senior office assistant vacancy in the Treasury Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Slukman-Daly?
Aye.
Slukman-Franco?
Aye.
Slukman-Heller?
Aye.
Slukman-Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item is appointing a new finance director. Mr. Kleckner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a real pleasure this evening to recommend for your approval the appointment of Gina Francone, CPA, as the finance director and the treasurer collector. Ms. Francone is a career public finance professional. She currently serves as the budget director in the city of Cambridge, Massachusetts, has also served as a finance director in a city in Michigan earlier in her career. I want just to explain a little bit about the process we used to fill this position. This is actually the second round of recruitment we did for this position, and we wanted to ensure that we got a very diverse and deep pool of candidates, and I believe we did that in our second round. We, this time around, hired a consulting firm by the name of Nonprofit Professionals Advisory Group, which is a firm dedicated to creating a deeper and more diverse pool. And they were very helpful for this particular recruitment, reaching out where I don't think we could have done it through our normal channels, and so I'm guessing we may use them again. It was a good experience, I believe. And I also convened a screening group to assist me in the process. Nancy Daly from this board, Pooja Mehta, a member of the Board of Library Trustees, Dr. Lloyd Gellino, who was our director of diversity, Greg Grubstein, a CPA and a member of our audit committee, and Sandra DeBeau, the human resources director. And we...
And Mary Ellen Dunn joined us.
Mary Ellen Dunn was very helpful as well in the school department. Thank you, Nancy. And we interviewed, the screening group interviewed seven candidates for this position, and then identified four for further consideration. And then I took it over, along with Sandra, to further vet the candidates. At the conclusion of that process, I identified Gina Francone as the most qualified candidate to assume that position. In addition to her very strong knowledge and experience in Massachusetts public finance, Ms. Francone was definitely, had very good references, and we were very pleased with that. We have since done all the required pre-employment work, background, physical, and all that stuff, so there are no conditions to this vote. The only thing that, we're going to have to wait just a few more weeks for Gina because obviously she's in the middle of a budget process in her city, and we don't want to leave the city in a lurch there, so it's going to be recommended that...
Why not?
Come on now. We've got to be nice to our neighbors. So, we are going to, I've recommended that her appointment be effective on May 22nd, which is right before town meeting.
Oh, just, you're not going to miss it.
A day before. And I also wanted to acknowledge, in the interim, it's been several months since Steve Cirillo has retired, and I wanted to especially acknowledge the division heads and then the finance department, who's really stepped up. Michael DePietro, our comptroller, Gary McCabe, our assessor, and David Gina-Caucus, our procurement officer. I also would like to acknowledge Austin Faison from my office, who spent a lot of time down in the treasurer collector's office. As you know, this position also serves as the treasurer collector. And we had a void down there, and Austin really filled, filled, and will continue to fill that void over the next several weeks, and I really appreciate his effort. And I think it was probably a mutual benefit. He learned a lot down there as well, in municipal finance. So, with that, I would request the board's motion, and then I'll ask Gina to come up and say a few words.
Yeah, I'll just say as a member of the screening committee that we're, I'm delighted Gina has taken the job. I think we all thought she was an outstanding candidate, so it's certainly a win for the town of Brookline.
Well, I met Gina this afternoon, and we were joking that she's now on the correct side of the river.
Well, I'll just add that in my discussion with her, I emphasize that we are a town, not a city, and that unfortunately, that's going to be the steepest learning curve for how this town, not just any town, but this town functions in a way that can make your job interesting.
Well, I'm sure that, you know, coming from Cambridge, where the budgets are much freer and they don't have any levy problems, and they don't have any, they don't have to do overrides. They have lots of commercial property, and it's very, very different here. So, I think it will be an interesting time for you, and we welcome you, and interested to hear your experiences and maybe... to hear your experiences, and maybe some kernels of knowledge that you can bring from Cambridge to help us in our struggles.
In my conversation with Gina, I probed on the issue of nonprofits, something that Cambridge has in, in large supply, and we in Brookline do as well. So, I think she's familiar with some of the struggles that we have in Brookline, some of the opportunities as well, and I want to welcome her to the town.
So, I'd like to make the motion for favorable action on, to appoint Gina Francone as Finance Director and Treasurer effective Monday, May 22nd, 2017.
Okay, and that's the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
I'd just ask Gina to come up and acknowledge the vote, and wish her well.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I have really enjoyed the entire process of going through the interview phase, and now this next phase of life for me. I really appreciate that. I'm looking forward to this new opportunity, and I've met many new team members, and it sounds like a really great place to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is the flag raising, and I know that this is a question of approving a resolution honoring and memorializing three enslaved men as among Brookline's first veterans with a flag-raising ceremony to be held on April 25th. Mr. Gordon, would you like to introduce this for us?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown, you can join him if you wish.
Thank you. I'm Neil Gordon, a Precinct 1 Town Meeting Member. Three years ago, town meeting unanimously adopted a resolution urging the Board of Selectmen to memorialize Brookline residents that served honorably in the Armed Forces of the United States with a modest flag-raising ceremony. Thank you very much, Nancy Daley. You were chairman of the subcommittee that first had the war, heard the Warren article three years-
Nancy Heller.
Oh, sorry, Nancy Heller.
You were saying Nancy Heller.
I took my glasses off, I apologize. I was looking right at you. My apologies. My apologies. Subsequently, we've recognized Brookline veterans, both men and women, from the World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam War eras. I thank the Selectmen, Town Meeting Members, and community members, veterans and non-veterans who attend these flag raisings. I also thank Mel Kleckner, our Town Administrator, for his attendance at these ceremonies. Mel quietly and quite unofficially has attended all of them. Mel, thank you, I much appreciate it. In 2016, our American Legion of VFW posts restored and rededicated the World War I plaque that now hangs on the first floor of this town hall. There are some 63 names on that plaque, Brookline boys who died nearly 100 years ago, and I entertained the notion that it's never too late to remember a friend or a family member who served. I also thought about the other plaques in the lobby of this town hall, from the Civil War and from the Revolutionary War, plaques that I'm sure you know. That thought that it's never too late to recognize, honor, and memorialize a Brookline veteran, and that there are three names on a Revolutionary War plaque that have long been hiding, hiding in plain sight, that brings me before you today. I asked the Board of Selectmen to adopt a resolution that you, on behalf of the town, recognize, honor, and memorialize three hidden Brookline veterans. Adam, Peter, and Prince, enslaved men of Brookline who marched with their owners to the Battle of Lexington on April 19th, 1775, 142 years ago tomorrow, because it is never too late.
After what, oh, sorry. I'm Barbara Brown. I'm the Chair of Hidden Brookline, and a long-term resident of the town, and a happy one. Hidden Brookline is a committee who's about, Adam, we know two things. We know that Adam marched to fight on that, to join the fight on that day, and we know where he is buried, which is in the town cemetery. However, unusually, he has not been given the courtesy of the burial with the Isaac Gardner family, which was typical in those days. He is buried in what we believe was the Potter's Field. What we know about his owner, though, is manifold. We know what street he was born on, who his parents were, how many brothers and sisters he had, who he married, when he married, how many children he had, and where he lived after he married, and where he died, and where he was buried, and why he was buried on the day that he was buried, which was several days after he had died. So, it's very, it's a reminder of what we have lost in our history. Not only have we lost these men whose lives were good men, but we have lost the knowledge of their lives, which is an enormous shame. The third man, Prince, we know two very interesting, two facts about his life. We know that he marched to that battle, and we know that two years later, he decided that he needed his freedom, and he escaped from Brookline. And we know that because Joshua Boylston took out an ad offering a substantial reward for his return, and reminding people that if he, if they helped him in his escape, or kept him from being known, that they were subject to a fine themselves, and perhaps What I'd like to thank is that he had heard the Declaration of Independence, which was a year before he took his freedom, where the Declaration of Independence, as Martin Luther King said, was a promissory note, that all men are born created free and equal. It was a note that did not get, has not been realized fully yet, but we have come a long way toward realizing it. And for that, I am not only grateful, but glad for all the people who have made that happen, among whom there are people in this very room. So, it is with hopes towards continuing our struggle for greater freedom for all that I stand here and ask that you approve this resolution. And by approving it, it will then be part of the record, and it is because of the old town records back to 1675, that we know almost as much as we do now about not only these men, but about other men who, and women, and children who were enslaved. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a resolution before us that I'll be proud to sign. I'm glad that Dr. Brown and Mr. Gordon are taking this up and brought this forward. I think this is a good thing to do, an exciting thing to do, that we finally honor these men. I'll just read the resolution quickly, that whereas on April 19th, 1775, three enslaved men, Adam, Peter, and Prince, marched with their owners to the Battle of Lexington as part of the Brookline militia, whereas Adam, Peter, and Prince took part in the War of Independence and helped create our nation, though they themselves were not free, and whereas we do not have the power to heal the wounds these men endured in our town, but we can and must recognize the pain of our past, and whereas it's fitting that the town of Brookline honor and memorialize these men, and whereas pursuant to a resolution of town meeting, since 2015, the town of Brookline has held flag-raising ceremonies memorializing Brookline veterans who served honorably in the Armed Forces of the United States of America. Therefore, be it resolved that on Tuesday, April 25th, 2017, the town of Brookline shall honor and memorialize Adam, Peter, and Prince as among Brookline's first veterans with a flag-raising ceremony to be held at Brookline High School, 115 Greeno Street, at approximately 9:45 in the morning. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be preserved among the records of the town of Brookline as a permanent record of this historic event.
I want to say just one more thing. I am, understand that students in a high school class are going to participate in this flag-raising ceremony. So, to Dr. Brown's point, I think it's great that, that this is going to be part of the town record, and in the future, somebody will hopefully look back in the records and understand that we took this action. I think it's equally important that, that it's being integrated into the education of kids in the high school, and that these students are going to witness it and perhaps even participate. Kudos to, to you and to Mr. Gordon for taking that action, introducing it to the high school, and kudos to Mr. Cothorn, who's taken the step of bringing his class to witness this, this important event.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, I'd like to commend you for, for this incredibly useful and interesting work you've done. I'd also like to sort of encourage you to, you know, not just view this as a interesting piece of history, but to dig more, find out more details about this history of these people, as well as other enslaved people here in, in, in Brookline and elsewhere. You know, you mentioned that Mr. Prince may have been influenced by the words of the Declaration of Independence. We do know that here in Massachusetts, many people, enslaved people, were influenced and took action as a result, whether, whether escaping slavery, or in the case of a fairly famous woman, Mom Bet, actually litigating the issue and winning her freedom. And, you know, there's stories like that, I'm sure, you know, maybe not as dramatic here in, in Brookline, that, you know, I really encourage you to try to, you know, get high school students, others interested in history to do, you know, not the, you know, the reading of what's already been written, but sort of digging around, the archaeological digging, historical records digging, to find those little pieces of information that you can build the story of these people up with, and would be, I think, a very, very useful historical and educational opportunity, especially for students.
If I may?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Green, for your comments and for your encouragement. I do continue to dig, and it is, we do know a few stories, because stories are powerful, because then you get a sense of the character of the people. We do know some other stories, but I don't think we have time for them tonight. I will say, though, that not only is it being taught at the high school, grade three in Massachusetts requires, in the state framework, the teaching of colonial Massachusetts, as well as Massachusetts geography. Unfortunately, the state frameworks lie. The state frameworks say that there were two populations in colonial Massachusetts, Native Americans and English Americans, when there were three. Boston, in the mid-1740s, was 15 to 25 percent enslaved. Brookline, one family in four, white family in four in the town in the 1740s, was an enslaving family. We do have stories like of Mom Bet, but of other courageous people. African-Americans began, they had the right in this state, even though they were enslaved, to petition the courts, as well as to serve as witnesses in court. And there is more coming out from court records of what African-American, enslaved African-Americans did to promote their own safety, as well as their own happiness. And they petitioned for their freedom, I think, starting in the 1750s, as a group to the state legislature, without results at the time. But there was energy, there was initiative, and there was commitment to freedom, and a belief that they deserved it. So, it's in the third grade curriculum. Brookline took an unusual step of insisting that it be part of the third grade curriculum.
Can I make one comment?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry. You want to go first?
Oh, I'm just wondering, I know there were some abolitionists who came out of Brookline.
Right.
Were these, would they have met any of these enslaved people, or was that a later time period?
It was a later time period. Slavery died out in Massachusetts. There used to be a belief that the Quok Worker case had solved it in 1783, I think it was. But now, the historians are now arguing that slavery actually died out, and part of the reason for it dying out was the talk of freedom, and the talk of independence, and both enslaved and enslavers feeling uncomfortable with talking about freedom. In fact, Brookline in 1774 said that it wanted, 17, early 75, that it wanted to be free from Britain, because Britain was trying to enslave the colony, Brookline, which I thought was rather interesting. The, under the abolition or the anti-slavery movement, the earliest evidence I've seen is of women in 1830s memorializing the state legislature for the ending of slavery in the South, because it had already ended here. The only overlap that I know of is family overlap, so Judge Sewell, the hanging judge from Salem, who was the first person to write a treatise against slavery in 1700. His grandson was one of the largest slave owners in Massachusetts. I looked at their dates, and the two men had not met. It would have been an interesting conversation.
Wow, yeah.
Let me just give your walking tours a plug here. Several months ago, I signed up through Brookline Community Adult Ed to take one of your tours of Hidden Brookline. It was fascinating. We went to town hall, Washington Street, down, up Warren, and Barbara tells so many wonderful stories.
And Suzette Abbott, who is in the room here, my co-leader.
Yes. Tells so many wonderful stories. She really brings the era to life. We talked a lot about the movement to hide people who were seeking their freedom, and what lengths they went to, to disguise themselves, you know, as they were riding trains or whatever. And it is a fascinating, you know, I'm sure you still do these, correct?
It seems that we do it every spring and every fall.
Yes.
So, we just had one last weekend, which was oversubscribed, and we will do it again in the fall.
Well, I urge people to sign up. They could sign up now for the fall, because it is really, really worthwhile.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, I'd like to, I think we need to move on, so I'd like to move that we approve the resolution honoring and memorializing three enslaved men as among Brookline's first veterans with a flag-raising ceremony to be held on April 25th, 2017. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Next item is question of discussing proposed general order on federal immigration enforcement and related matters, and we are going to be taking public comment on this. Just a word of apology, inadvertently, we scheduled this at the same time as the Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Working Group on immigration enforcement policies. So, I'm glad the group has joined us, hopefully to help, help us through the discussion and provide input. So, I'm glad to see you all here and everyone else who's joined us. I'd like to turn it over to Selectman Green, who's kind of been leading us on the board on this matter. So, Selectman Green?
Yeah, let me give some background. You may recall that in February, the Board issued a statement, four-part statement on your thinking on how to deal with the issues around refugees and immigrants that were being thrown in our face by the current administration in Washington. And that four-part statement addressed issues that the town should, should work on with respect to police procedures, as well as town services, and certain legal steps, and also, and very important, things that we felt that the community should become engaged in, to assist the town and to address this issue, this issue of immigrants and refugees in a more holistic manner. From that statement, there was a suggestion to the, or a, we asked the Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations to look at police procedures and issues around them, and to come up with proposal to the Board, and a working group was set up by the Commission that resulted in a proposal, proposed provisions to be adopted by the Board with respect to police procedures in connection with immigration rights. Those proposals were discussed by the Board, and, you know, we, we had a hearing and received a large amount of the community, our public comment, and we voted on three parts of that, three pieces of that proposal, but decided to look at the other parts of the Commission's proposal in a little more detail, and incorporate some of the comments we heard from the public at our hearing. Selectman Daley offered to take a first look at the proposals and make some edits to what was presented. I agreed to also look at them. I agreed to also look at them. After Selectman Daley's edits and additions to the commission proposals, I took a look at them and basically accepted Selectman Daley's edits, for the most part. But I also added a couple other provisions to deal with specifically the federal requirement that towns not, or jurisdictions not prohibit officials from communicating with ICE, the so-called Section 1373 provision, as well as addressing very specifically the special order issue that came up in this context. And also to add language with respect to how we view immigrants and refugees here in town, you know, our values with respect to, you know, these issues. I also shared what I came up with, with the chief, the police chief, to make sure that, you know, any inputs he had with respect to the workability of these proposals would be also incorporated. He did have some comments, and we incorporated most of those comments. I also shared it with other people, just as a courtesy. And what we're looking at today is the result of, you know, that process, that two or three month, or two-month process. And, you know, what we have is, first, a proposed policy of the Board of Selectmen to be issued by the police chief with respect to general federal immigration enforcement and related matters. And that is, you know, the first item in the materials called Federal Immigration Enforcement. And it starts off with a discussion of the general view that all persons coming before the department, the police department, shall be afforded all the civil and human rights and due process and equal protection safeguards available under the Constitution and laws of the United States, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Town of Brookline, and treaties of the United States as applicable irrespective of the immigration status. So that was an attempt to sort of state a general perspective with respect to these issues, that we're going to treat everyone equally, fairly, and with respect, irrespective of what's coming down from other layers of our government. And then we addressed a number of specific issues, you know, second item being no police officer will inquire about a person's immigration status. We say no funds or other resources will be used for immigration enforcement. And that really relates to a provision that the current administration in Washington is pushing very, very hard, and that is a provision that allows the, allows cities, counties, or towns to enter into agreements with the Attorney General of the United States, whereby those jurisdictions will be trained by the feds, and then will be able to carry out immigration enforcement for the feds. So, you know, that provision was designed to make sure that, it's very clear that we will not, we will not do anything along those lines. Let's see, item four is, we will not make any avail, any information in our databases or other record-keeping systems available with respect to any effort to try to impose a registration system. And of course, you know, the main, you know, proposal that we're looking at now from the federal government is the threat, I mean, has been expressed in terms of executive order or legislation, but the threat to set up a Muslim registry. So that's addressed that issue. And I guess, you know, the main, the main thing that everyone is talking about is item six here, which has to do with ICE detainers, which are civil warrants, so-called, that request a local law enforcement agency to hold someone for a period of time after they would otherwise be released from custody, in order to allow ICE to come and take them into custody for purposes of deportation. Those civil, I call them warrants, but they're not warrants in any serious sense. Those civil detainers are merely requests by ICE to have local law enforcement agencies help them, and, you know, this policy would prohibit our police department from responding to an ICE detainer. And, let's see, without going into more detail than people are probably interested in, since you can probably have copies of this. Yeah, it also finally ends with the opportunity of police chief to issue procedures. These are policies, to issue procedures to implement the policy that would be included in the department's manual and kept up to date on the public website. So that's the first group of proposals that we came up with. The second group of proposals is the, is called the question of approving a police, a policy governing the promulgation of special orders and general orders of the Brookline Police Department. As you know, special orders, 2012-6 created a lot of controversy in town, and there's a lot of confusion as to where it came from, and why it was out there, and who knew about it, et cetera. So what I want to do, what I'm trying to do here is to create a procedure whereby special orders and general orders are, come from the Board of Selectmen, and they are issued to the department by the police chief with respect to the promulgation of general orders, as well as special orders. It includes some exceptions for special orders that relate to confidential matters, but, you know, even there, there are some protections to ensure that the board is aware of what these confidential special orders are related to. And finally, dealing with Section eight, or eight USC, Section 1373, which is a provision that prohibits any jurisdiction from prohibiting anyone from communicating with ICE. What we're doing here is making a statement that, you know, basically says this, "No government official or department of the Town of Brookline shall be prohibited or in any way restricted from sending to or receiving from the Immigration and Naturalization Service information regarding the citizenship or immigration status lawful or unlawful of any individual." That's basically lifting the language from that statute. And then the second part of this, and this is a statement from the Board of Selectmen, you know, in case anyone says, "Are you violating the federal law?", we say, "Well, here's our statement." The second part of the statement says, "Notwithstanding the foregoing paragraph, no government official or department of the Town of Brookline shall be authorized by this statement to collect any information regarding the citizenship or immigration status lawful or unlawful of any individual if such information is not required to be collected by the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the bylaws of the Town of Brookline, or the policies or regulations of the Brookline Police Department." So we're attempting to sort of ensure that we're not violating this federal law, which would give, which would put us within the crosshairs of the Trump administration's efforts to go after towns that he views as not cooperating with his immigration policies. But it also makes clear that we're not collecting information that, you know, is unnecessary or, you know, could be made available to ICE or other departments. That, in general, is what we've done, and I think people who've read this will have some comments, and I think the procedure, or the plan, is to receive comments from the public, and next week, some of those comments may be incorporated into these proposals, and we will then vote on it at that time.
Yeah, I just want to say, I see Anthony Narrows here, and I want to thank him again, because he did the, on behalf of the Diversity Commission, did the first pass at this, and then I took it and put some comments in what we'd heard, and then handed it off to Bernard, and he did some work on it. But that wouldn't have really been possible without all the work that Anthony did to get us launched on this. And so I think we now have, what we've got here is substantially better than what Cambridge and Somerville and some other communities have. I'm pleased that we put in some stuff to protect people, you know, who are maybe stopped in a traffic stop or something like that, so, because I know that there are some cities and towns that use that as an opportunity to find out information to use against people. And, you know, and also we're protecting, you know, people who want to come forth as witnesses to a crime, regardless of what their immigration status would be. So, you know, I think it's certainly a vast improvement over what, you know, what many other communities have, and what we had before.
Mr. Narrows, would you like to add something?
I pumped enough hot air into the room, so I'll be brief, and I thank you for your comments, Selectman Daley. I would say that I was more of a mouthpiece than anything. The working group for the commission, you know, they're really responsible. I don't just want to have my name on the work. Everyone put in a lot of hard work and effort into it. But thank you. And I agree with you, and one of my main comments was going to be that, you know, I think it's, the Board of Selectmen should be really proud of itself. If you look at the other policies, Cambridge, Somerville, New In, we're far more, I'd say, progressive or advanced in terms of protecting rights in a broader manner. So I think that's something that's great, and I'm hoping that maybe it will be used as a model for the other towns. I've actually spoke with a representative from Mayor Kurton's office in Somerville, asking them to take a look at what we've done, and maybe amend some of their policies as well in that town, so, and I've also spoken to people from other towns, and they are watching what we're doing, which is good. One brief note, and I just think it's important for the public to understand, you know, the ACLU, this is hard stuff. And, you know, the ACLU has model, has a model policy that it wants to put forward, and it's been through a couple drafts, and I would say, Scott, for sending me the most recent one. But if you look at that, some aspects of that model policy, and Brookline's policy that you've heard today, ours is more protective, I would argue. There is a, there is a "don't ask" rule that the ACLU puts forward that says, "Officials shall not inquire into the immigration or citizenship status of an individual except where the inquiry relates to a legitimate law enforcement purpose that's unrelated to the enforcement of a civil immigration law or required by state or federal law," et cetera. And I would say that the language that the board has, I think, is more protective, because it doesn't allow that broad discretion. What it says is, "You can't ask this question, and if there is a reason for it, the chief has to put it before the Board of Selectmen, there has to be a public hearing." So it's less broad, there's more control on it, it's more transparent. So I love that language, and I think it's great that you modeled that, you created that language. But I think it just goes to show, there's not one right answer. I mean, we all look to the ACLU, I think, for guidance on this issue, but there's not one right answer. The other thing I would just note, because I know some people have an issue with the eight USC 1373 language, Bernard, the ACLU model policy cites that, and they have a 1373 rule. And what they say is that it's optional, but it's meant to be a clear signal that while your city or town wants to be an immigrant-friendly or freedom city, it does not want to violate federal law. So even the ACLU has that rule in there. And so I know that there may be some members of the public who are critical of that being in there, but it is federal law, and the ACLU recognizes that, it's in there, I think it's number, it's right after number nine. So just take a look at that and keep an open mind.
Can we say more about that, because that's a paragraph that seems really troubling. This needs to contradict.
Sure, if that's okay? Sure. Sure. So I guess what I'll say is that there is, the, so the Trump administration had a statement of propaganda, we'll call it, where they said, "Sanctuary city is going to lose federal funding." That was in the executive order. So not true, because, one, there's no definition of what a sanctuary city actually is, and then, two, if you actually read the quote-unquote fine print of that executive order, it says if a municipality violates this specific federal law, they could be subject to sanctions. Now, whether that's true is to be determined by the courts, but what that law says is that you can't prohibit a municipal employee from calling ICE, from receiving a phone call from ICE, or transmitting information to ICE about a person's immigration status. That's what it basically boils down to. So you can't block the call, and you can't tell your employees they can't call them. It does not mandate that your employees call the federal government. It does not prevent you from prioritizing when an employee should spend time talking to ICE on the phone. It's, you still have discretion, you can still prioritize, is my opinion. But that's all that that statute says, is you can't stop somebody from talking to ICE. And that was challenged, actually, by Rudy Giuliani, believe it or not. This was a Clinton law, and it was challenged by Rudy Giuliani, because New York City used to have a rule that said you can't share a person's immigration status with the federal government. And so when the Clinton administration signed this law, it was the Immigration Reform Act, and then the Welfare Reform Act as well had a similar provision, they challenged that in the Tenth Circuit, and they lost, because it wasn't a violation of the Tenth Amendment, because, again, the federal government's not commanding the state to actually do anything. They're just saying, "You can't stop your employees from doing something, but we're not telling you you have to." Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay.
If I may add one thing, the executive order that relates to this is an interesting piece of scribbling, in that it talks about sanctuary cities. In terms of violating Section 1373, then it tries to insinuate that sanctuary cities are also violating federal law if they don't allow their law enforcement agencies to cooperate with the federal government in immigration enforcement, or if they don't recognize and comply with ICE detainers. I mean, so what it's trying to do is basically, in my opinion, confuse the issue and say that sanctuary cities is any, or sanctuary jurisdiction is any jurisdiction that has anything supportive of immigrant rights and, you know, threatening to take away federal funding. I think, I think Tony sort of suggested that he can't take away federal funding, except certain very limited Department of Justice grants without congressional action. Of course, that's problematic these days, but, you know, he doesn't have the right to just, you know, take away CDPG grants, for example, or, you know, other grants that cities and towns rely on. But it's a scare tactic, and we have to be very careful in how we respond, you know, not to put ourselves in a position of being, you know, manipulated by those scare tactics.
And we also have to make sure that we're not asking our own law enforcement officers to break the law. It's just counterintuitive, right? There was, may I?
I have a question, just, you mentioned the ACLU.
Yes. Could you go to the microphone?
Yeah.
You're on TV, so.
Oh, yeah. No, I just didn't.
I didn't quite understand. I'm Lynn Anderson, and I live in the Colledge Corner. If you don't ask, I mean, the "don't ask, don't tell" policy, I don't understand why the department has to ask someone's immigration status. If they don't ask, then there's no problem. No one's going to call anybody. No municipal employee is going to be forbidden from making a phone call, because they won't know. That's what I don't understand.
Well, that's what we put in, that they won't inquire, but I can, there are some situations, I'm picturing in my mind where they're trying to get somebody to get somebody to become a witness, and the person is reluctant to become a witness, and finally they say, "Well, you know, I'm illegal, and that's why I don't want to be a witness." So there may be situations in which somebody reveals that, even if they haven't asked that question.
But in general practice--
This comes up in the context, for the most part, arrest. And when someone's arrested, their fingerprints go through state police and then the FBI, and ICE automatically gets them. So that's where we come into, you know, all these situations. ICE knows about them because they're fingerprinted.
Yeah, but our policy says no police officer or other employee of the, or our proposed policy says no police officer or other employee of the department shall inquire about a person's immigration status. So that's what we're saying.
Right. It does recognize, I mean, it goes on to say, and it does recognize that there may be circumstances that the chief feels it would be germane, and that would have to be brought to the Board of Selectmen, and then there would be a public hearing, which is still more protective than, in my opinion, the ACLU policy, which is good. You know, the working group too, and I'll be quiet after this, but the working group, we're working on the pre-arrest policies, and we adopted language, again, that was more protective than the ACLU model language, where it says you cannot ask pre-arrest a person's immigration status even when you're trying to identify them. And, you know, we've talked to the chief about that, and they concur with that as well. So the department is supportive of that. So, thank you for your time.
Sure. I'd like to get a sense of how many people would like to comment on this. Just raise your hand. Okay, I don't see too many. So, Mr. Ananian, then Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Leffson, and then anyone else?
There was a gentleman, right.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. And I'd like to--
If you can try to keep it--
Yeah, my name is Clifford Scott Ananian, Town Meeting Member for Pusing 10. I'll try to be as brief as I can.
About three or four minutes?
Have already emailed you a lot of these points, so I'll summarize those. As, just to start, as you know, Frank Farlow was part of the group which passed the first two resolutions for sanctuary city for the town. And he and I started working on this in November. I think he'd be pleased with his policy, but I'm sure he wouldn't have us not rest on our laurels. So in that spirit, I'll offer some suggestions for improvement. So, starting with the policy, the federal immigration policy. So Tony mentioned the ACLU's nine model policies, and we did, I went point by point, we did check off most of those nine. There are four things in the ACLU policy that we're missing, and I'm going to mention them. I will also email these to you in writing, so you have them there. So the first one is defined access rule. That's number three on the ACLU list. That is, regulates the access of agents of the federal government, ICE agents, to our police station, our jails, and our town facilities. So it says, basically, they can't just barge in and ask people questions while they're in jail unless they have a valid judicial warrant. Related to that, number four on the ACLU list is a clear identification rule, again, that says that ICE agents must identify themselves as ICE agents, not generically as police. We talked to the police chief about this. The desire of the Brookline Police is that the Brookline Police be involved to some degree in any ICE raids that occur, so that they can hold the line and make sure that the federal agents are acting within their bounds, and generally to act the peace, and to protect any unaffiliated people. When you have Brookline Police and ICE agents involved in the same area, I think it's very important that we be able to distinguish who's who in that case. So that's the clear identification rule. Number seven on the ACLU list is, relates to surveillance. It says that discriminatory surveillance, that we won't target a group for surveillance because of their racial or background or immigration status. This dovetails nicely with another ACLU program called C-COPS, Community Control of Police Surveillance, and I expect to be talking to you in the future about that. So I'm putting a bookmark there. We do have a camera oversight committee for the Sims Project, which last met in January, but they have not published their 2016 report yet. So I'm hoping that in the near future, we can sort of broaden the scope of our surveillance review and include this provision, making sure that our surveillance policies aren't discriminatory, as well as general, more oversight of our surveillance technologies that might be employed in the future. I'm trying to be a little bit forward-looking there. And then number eight on the ACLU policy is a defined means of redress. We do have in our police policy mechanisms for redress. I think it would be worth mentioning here in this immigration-related policy, what, you know, just cite our existing policy, what do you do if you see the police violating this, or you suspect there's a problem? I think we'd be well served by just increasing accountability. So that's, those are my four points for the federal immigration thing. On the special orders, I sent you email, I've got a few more concerns about that. I think it is a marked improvement over the policy we had in the past, which is how some of these policies snuck in. I think the confidentiality provisions in the new policy require a little bit of work, and I suggest two improvements. One, for each special order which is held, to be held confidential, that we include the particular section in the public records law which justifies the confidentiality of that provision. And I think that will provide us a little bit better guide to what the policy is about and why it is sensitive than just the title, which is, I think, was provided there. I also think that we should provide refiner-grained redaction of special orders. So if there's a special order that deals with traffic stops, and it includes somewhere in it the exact location that they're doing traffic stops today, that could be used as a reason to keep the entire policy confidential. I think we should make sure that those policies are redacted in a fine-grained manner, so that the exact location of the traffic stop, say, is held confidential. But the general policy on traffic stops should be readable by the public. And then finally, the distinction between special and general orders is still quite confused. The special orders are described as temporary, but that's not actually accurate, and I talked to the chief yesterday about this in particular. They're temporary insofar as, for example, they have a directive from the State District Attorney on how they want certain cases handled. That's temporary because the State District Attorney might change, but it's not temporary meaning, you know, it's in effect, you know, until changed, just like any other general order. So I think describing special orders as temporary is inaccurate. Special orders, as you may not be aware, don't require review by the Board of Selectmen in this policy, and that's the chief's opinion as well. They're intended for sort of time-sensitive matters, so they take effect immediately upon review by town council before the Board of Selectmen has a chance to review them. And that is probably okay. There are a large number of special orders which are operations-based. For example, the chief told me yesterday that he issued a special order to allow the police force to wear short sleeves for the marathon on Monday, right? So clearly, these things don't have to come before the Board of Selectmen. In fact, I worry that if they do, you'll end up, you know, seeing so many things that you won't notice anything that was actually of concern. So since the distinction between what is a valid special order and was a general order is quite tricky, the alternative I suggest is that both general orders and special orders take effect only after publication. I talked to the police, the chief, they have publication in-house, there's no problem with timely publishing a special order that required immediate action. But that means that at least any special order was immediately visible and could be reviewed if we decide that, you know, it did actually merit review by the full Board of Selectmen. And so in that case, we're sort of, rather than tackling some of the harder distinctions between general orders and special orders--
And finally?
Finally, the town. So these special orders affect the police department. I believe the town should also consider similar bylaws affecting town employees, especially provisions two and four of the federal immigration policy. Town employees shouldn't inquire about immigration status, and town data--
I think we already have that in our overreaching policies. We already adopted that.
Okay, that's great.
And there are lots of people--
Yep. Final statement. The final provision that the, that we won't violate federal law, just a brief note of history about that. That was, Boston has a long history with conflict with the feds about this. Most infamously, the Fugitive Slave Act was an act of the federal government--
Right, we've heard of that.
--to try to enforce federal policies. The ACLU does mention this language as acceptable, but it also stresses that it is optional and should not be required. And, you know, just in the spirit of things--
Thank you.
I'd like to encourage us to think that maybe we don't need to do, don't need to say the feds can take our slaves, which is what the Fugitive Slave Act, what the conflict then was.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you.
By the way, I think a lot of your suggestions will probably be taken up by the commission going forward. I mean, a lot of them relate to free, or some of them relate to pre- less pre-arrest issues, and then immigration raids are something that we're going to begin discussing and working on in the future, which is also unrelated to these particular provisions.
Marty Rosenthal, Town Meeting Member, former Selectman, co-chair of Brookline Pact. I too commend this board, I commend the working group, Tony, Bernard Green especially, for this board and the work they've done, Nancy. I think a lot of progress has been made. By the way, Scott contacted me and Frank back around November, eager to jump on this, and I appreciate his interest in it as well. Actually, Frank, who we all miss, was actually not here in '85 for the first resolution. So I have a history on this as well, back to '85, on the first of the two sanctuary resolutions. I want to comment especially on two areas. I'm not going to, what I've presented, given to you tonight is, Tony had the courtesy, because he knew I had the interest in this and also a criminal lawyer. He sent me a draft of what's before you for discussion tonight, a few weeks ago. And these were my comments to him dated April 11th, before the draft that's on your table for your discussion tonight. I think a lot of it is still in your draft, and a lot of my red lines would be pertinent as to the details. This is something where the details are the devil, and I think the nitpicking, I'm not going to go through them all, but I hope you'll look at them as you deliberate on this, and I hope the working group will as well. Tony got it from me on April 11th, and there are little things, you know, like, "shall inquire about a person's immigration status if it's an element of the crime." I'm not sure that's really the way to phrase that sentence, for instance, and I suggest an alternative there. And I'm not really going to highlight all these things, because they are before you--
We took that, we took that out--
Sorry?
We took that part out.
So that's not--
Yeah, you've got to read the latest version.
Well, I have the latest version, I haven't had time to print it. I got that a couple of days ago, and I haven't even printed it. So some of these things will be pertinent and some maybe won't be. But let me get to the bigger issue for me, which is a somewhat arcane and esoteric issue. It's finally hitting me that general orders and special orders are a confusing pair of items. And we went through this when I was a selectman on the Police and Community Relations Report drafted with Jeffrey Allen, later adopted by unanimous board, and five, I think five pages are attached to the back of this. And it's the pages that deal with the selectmen's role in adopting police policies, and the need for public hearings, and the decision on whether something is a policy issue is in itself a policy issue, that the board should decide what should have public input. Now, this was written at the time there were special orders and general orders, just as there are now. But what's different, and this has just hit me the last 24 hours, is that when we did that and wrote that in 1987, it was really the pre-computer age. I mean, there were computers, but there wasn't the internet, there wasn't a town website with police procedures. We drafted and were, then the board adopted, detailed disciplinary procedures that were in writing, but they weren't available to the public unless, like everything else, someone came to a police station or town hall and got them. Everything's changed now, and things are available. And Chief O'Leary, to his credit, has published the Police Policy Manual, what I think it's called the Manual in shorthand, and most jurisdictions don't do that. And he's done that for a few years, and that's a good thing. The problem is that things like special orders and general orders are kind of dangling out there. Are they, are they part of that manual? I don't think they were, unless something's changed recently. I think they should be integrated into the Policies and Procedures Manual. I don't just think they should be adopted by this board, and then what happens? I don't know. The 1987 report was adopted five to nothing by the board, and it hasn't gathered dust, but to the extent that police chiefs wanted to do anything about it subsequently, especially when Chief O'Leary came in '96, I believe, things started happening. But before that, these votes, which are analogous to the votes that you have before you as proposed votes, were sitting in a drawer somewhere. And they, except for somebody like me, who in some instances has a good memory and can be stubborn, people forgot about them. So I think that some effort should be given to thinking about the lasting value and the lasting transparency of things like, especially general orders, which are indistinguishable as a policy from what's in the police manual. At least the police manual is out there, it's published, it's mandatory on the police with the sanction of possible discipline if an officer violates it. But so, it's the closest that we could have in Brookline to what cities have, which is ordinances that control their police. I mean, the selectmen have a unique role in creating police policy, and I think that some thought needs to be given to how to enunciate those policies. And I'm questioning some of these things as, quote, "policies," as "general orders," that, you know, five years from now, who's going to know where they are and what they are?
Can I just say, I think we actually addressed that specific point. Both number one and number two provide that the board hereby adopts the following regulation, and regulation is a term used in the statute, to be issued as a general order of the chief, and then later on, we talk about how it's to be incorporated into the manual. So I think we tried to address that.
That's part of my question, is how is it incorporated? Is it like an appendix? Is it, if you read the section on arrest, will there be some cross-reference and a footnote, see general order so-and-so relative to this? It just strikes me that it should really be incorporated into the text of the arrest procedures, for instance. I mean, that's a little more work, and so much work has been put into this, but it's just been dawning on me the last week or so, when I've been having some emails with Tony, and I've sent something to Neil about this question.
Okay, yeah, we'll think about that.
Yeah, that's it.
And let me try and get others.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you all for your work.
Mr. Leffson?
Thank you again, Robert Leffson, Thorndike Street resident. First of all, wanted to thank everybody for the tremendous amount of work that's been done and the progress that's been made. I've been sort of attending a lot of the working group session meetings, and just as an observer and a periodic contributor unofficially, and appreciate the opportunity for doing that, and the work is tremendous. It's really moved in the right direction. I guess my biggest issues here that I'm looking at is really about-- I guess my biggest issues here that I'm looking at is really about, it's about making sure that things are as explicit as possible and that there is as small amount of discretion given to the police department as possible. Given that the board oversees the police, I think it's important to put those policies in. And, you know, as an example, for instance, you know, in number nine, which is page two of this document here, "The department shall provide a copy of the general order pertaining to this policy and training on the procedures related to such general order to all police officers employed by the Brookline Police Department." That's great, that's a wonderful opening. I think there needs to be more details as to how that gets done and how the policies are ensured that are enforced properly. It feels too vague and it feels too discretionary when it's just training in general. So I think there needs to be more elaboration on something like that. I would also.
Are you, I'm just not quite sure what you're getting at. Are you saying you want more explicitness on what training? Or are you saying you want some kind of monitoring to see how it's enforced?
Probably a little bit of both, actually, I think is pretty important. There are hundred and twenty, hundred and sixty police officers in the department, something like that, and it's hard to get this type of information out, and not every police officer may agree with these policies. And I think it's important from the board to really make it very, very clear that this has to be followed, and there needs to be accountability as a result. I guess that's what I'm trying to get across, if that makes sense. A second piece of this also, I think, has to do with some of the discretion. Maybe go back, and it's really number two, and Selectman Green, when you were reviewing things earlier, you went from, you know, on the federal immigration enforcement piece, you went from one, number one, to number three, to number four, and kind of glossed over number two. And I think here where, "No police officer or other employee of the department shall inquire about a person's immigration status," and then it goes on, real or suspected immigration status, "except in limited circumstances specifically identified by the chief and approved by the board in a public session as not inconsistent with the policy." There's something here, I know the board's going to be approving it, but it still feels a little too loose to me. And perhaps I'm mistaken in that, but it was something that.
It's approved in a public, so they're going to have to have a session like this that's noticed, and folks like yourself will have an opportunity to comment.
Okay, I mean, I just.
That one.
Yeah, okay. Perhaps, yeah, I'm misreading that a touch. And then I guess finally, which goes back to the final piece, you know, thirteen seventy-three, it feels like kind of what we're doing here in general is in potentially violation of federal law, you know, which is fine with me, but, so, number one and number two in that final piece feel extremely contradictory. And so either we are a sanctuary jurisdiction or we're not a sanctuary jurisdiction. And if the ACLU says this is an optional piece, then maybe we should seriously consider it not being there. Doesn't mean that we aren't, that we are or aren't in violation of it, but it feels extremely contradictory, notwithstanding the foregoing paragraph.
Okay.
It's just kind of going, it's a circular logic to me, and it doesn't make a lot of sense, so.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Any, yes, ma'am?
I'm Margaret Rhodes, and I live in Brookline.
Can you say your name again? I'm sorry.
Margaret Rhodes.
Okay.
I think it's really great that this is happening, and I think that it's extremely important for the police not to cooperate with ICE to the fullest extent possible. I just would also like to agree with the previous speaker that I think this, the number one and number two at the end, I think it would give a very contradictory message to immigrants. It certainly did to me, and if it's optional, I think it shouldn't be there. I mean, we aren't required to cooperate with ICE. ICE requests it, and I think it would be far better to leave it out.
Okay, thank you. Harriet?
I had thought I wouldn't say.
And you are?
Hiya, hiya, Harriet Rosenstein, Center Street, precinct. What really I want to say is, you guys have done a marvelous job, and I want to thank you. When I had said I wanted to say something tonight about a contradiction, it is the contradiction that now has been pointed out by two people, and I'm sure that it's clear, yeah, that it is contradictory, and that in all likelihood, this should just be stricken, yeah? It has no use that we can actually rely on. So, thank you, get rid of this, we're in business. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I defend this provision? Number one says, "We will not communicate." Number two says, "We will not collect any information." I think they're two different things.
Sure, coming up, join us.
Hello, good evening, Jessica Kiko. I've been a member of the working group with the commission. I am an immigration attorney by training, and so I just have a very quick note, which is that in the language about thirteen seventy-three, you make reference to the INS, the Immigration Naturalization Service, and I know that that reflects the language in the federal law. However, as many people know, the INS hasn't existed since two thousand and three, and it's been replaced by the Department of Homeland Security. So I just think, for purposes of being current and making sure that officers are never going to be talking to the INS because it no longer exists, that they know that that language actually refers to DHS. So, that's it.
Thank you. Yeah, it's funny, because I caught that, I don't know, a few weeks ago when this was before us, and kind of made its way back.
Yeah, it's a very common.
No, I, as an ex-fed, having worked in the Kennedy Building where the whole first floor is now ICE, used to be INS.
Even ICE still says INS.
Yeah.
Yeah, I put that in there because that's what the statute says. I wanted to track the statute saying, no, we're not violating your little statute. But maybe what we can do is put in parentheses now known as.
I mean, maybe we should leave it that way, and that might make everyone happy.
No, but the problem is, a police officer will read this and say, oh, it says, it refers to INS, but I'm talking to ICE, so this doesn't apply. So we don't want that.
Well, that's not addressed to the police officer, it's addressed to, you know, Trump coming down saying, what is your policy? Yeah.
There's some language around the detainers and the first set of policies that refer to ICE, and we may just want to look at those and see if an appropriate revision is, the revision is appropriate there as well.
Okay. Anyone else wish to comment? I think our intent, I guess, Selectman Green.
We'll do another round of S.
But you're going to be gone.
Well, we'll have to work fast. We'll do another, we'll take a look at all these comments that we've heard and take another pass.
Okay, so.
I want to thank people for the comments as well. I think it was very helpful, at least to me, and based in the text. So thank you for taking the time to read it and for coming and letting us know what your thoughts are and where improvements could be made.
Okay, so our hope.
Can I just say, if any of your comments have not been put in writing and you think that they would be helpful to us, email it to, you know, I guess, me or Selectman Daly, just so we have, you know, a hard copy of what you're thinking.
Okay, our goal is to vote this next week, hopefully. Selectman Daly's last meeting.
Last meeting.
This will be your swan song.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for your participation, helping us out with this. I think we're on our way to having a real trailblazing policy here. We have a.
Hello, Jan.
We now have a public hearing on Article thirteen, which is related to tobacco control. Selectman Daly.
I'm Nancy Daly. I was chairman of the Selectmen's Tobacco Control Committee, and I don't.
I would ask if you can have a conversation, do it out in the hallway.
I don't see any of my committee members here, but I think, oh, here we go, there's somebody, Mike Chu in the back is here. Move up, Mike, come on up, support me here.
Don't be shy.
So, one, I have to apologize, the Advisory Subcommittee has suggested a couple of relatively small changes, but due to the pressures of cooking an elaborate Easter dinner and trying to get my taxes done, I didn't get the version with the changes to you guys. But it's things like, the effective date on here is September first, twenty seventeen. I put that date in so that I'd have time to go to the Attorney General's office. They wanted me to say approval by the Attorney General or September first, whichever is later. And then there was, they had a couple little changes on, like, we say they have to renew within thirty days. They wanted us, I think, to give sixty days notice to people. And also, the, Pat Maloney explained to us that he would call somebody in for an administrative hearing if they were going to lose their permit. Is that, have I got that right, Pat, maybe? And so maybe we're going to reference that in here, that there would be, they felt like we were being a little cavalier of maybe, since the thrust of this is to reduce the number of tobacco permits in town. And Mike, do you have any of the data of, we know that, we heard from some of our committee members, that there is a correlation between the number of tobacco outlets and the number of young people that start smoking. So the more tobacco outlets you have nearby, the more young people are apt to start smoking, and the fewer will stop smoking. So that was really the rational basis for an article that would lower the number of tobacco permits. So the thrust of this would be, we tried to come in with a balance between lowering the number of permits but not really hurting the existing businesses that hold these permits. So this would provide that there are no more first-time permits. So, but the businesses that have them would get to keep them, provided that they renew in a timely manner, which we're still hammering out, as I say, the Advisory Subcommittee wanted that to be sixty days instead of thirty.
And then if this business is sold, the buyer can assume.
One time. Well, it's not exactly assume, there'd be kind of a presumption, they would get it. They still have to go through the Health Department process and qualify under their rules and regulations, but it would be sort of the equivalent to our liquor permits now, where you say, you know, you're selling the business to somebody, and they would apply for the new liquor permit, but there's the sort of assumption that they're going to get it if there's nothing, no disqualifying thing in their past. So they would get to sell the business once, and the new person would get to apply and presumably get the tobacco permit.
But that person will not be able to sell the business and keep the tobacco.
Right. So what we were going for was that there would be this gradual reduction in the number of permits, but the people that currently have businesses with them actually get kind of a boon for a while because there's no additional competition entering that market. And so their current permit that they have is, you know, increases the value of their business for the time being, and in the one sale, presumably, people would realize, well, you have a, you have one of the few permits in town, which is good, but you're not going to be able to sell the business with that permit a second time. So the, you know, so there's a kind of counterbalancing effect, I guess, on their business. So for that reason, because we are restricting businesses somewhat, the Economic Development Advisory Board decided to take, they recognized the health reasons we were going in this direction, but, you know, we were impinging on businesses somewhat, so they took no position. And Evan's here, if you have questions about that. The Public Health Advisory Council voted in favor, and Pat Maloney's here, if you want to, maybe you want to say something, Pat. So what our thought was that, you know, we're giving the current businesses a nice long time to figure out other things to sell so that will, you know, make up their profit margin.
Good evening, Patrick Maloney, Acting Director of Public Health and Human Service. The Advisory Council took this up as a public hearing, and if you recall, originally, there was a proposal to outright ban tobacco. And they were pleased to see that this was a compromise, where it is still, it'll be phasing out tobacco eventually, which the Advisory Council supports. They also liked the element that it allowed a vendor to sell the establishment, at least, or sell the establishment with the permit at least once. So it puts the cards on the table, where they have the establishment with the permit, and it could be sold to the next individual, and they know what they're buying into. So that was important. They reflected positively on that. They supported the spirit of the law. We were a little concerned, the council was a little concerned with some of the changes, but they just seemed to be more administrative. And I did mention to the council that our administrative procedures are very by the numbers. In here, it says if somebody does not renew their permit within X number of days, they would lose that permit. So there was a concern where there would be a kind of gotcha, you didn't renew by this date. And I assured the council that our procedures are, we send out notices, we send out reminder notices, but then it would be in the hands of the applicant. If they fail to not renew, and we would have a paper trail of when we attempted to have the documents renewed, then that was their own fate to lose that potential license.
So I think you've done some good work here. I'm just curious why, first of all, I have a concern that if people pass a business down through generations.
We did, we did.
Not consider that.
We did have some discussion about people maybe setting up a family trust and evading our, you know, attempt to sort of limit that, how long there could be permits. There might be some of that. I think in the end, we came to that that might be an issue for a future town meeting to address, if people really are trying to find, you know, super creative ways to evade our regulation here.
I'm curious as to why you didn't just cut it off. People who have their license now can operate, but they're going to actually do a pretty good business because they're not going to have any competition.
Yeah.
So why do they need the right to sell that?
Well, we had, we had a lot of discussions about, you know, this was kind of the compromise version, as I say, we had a lot of discussion. There were people on our group who would have, you know, been happy to, you know, ban tobacco entirely from the town, or do as you say, just say, well, we think there's twenty-one currently permits, and we've actually, it's actually come down in recent years as some. some 7-Eleven-type stores have gone out of business. So, that's good. We're kind of at a low point, and that's a good place to cap it. Yeah, there, you know, there were, we had a sort of range of proposals. We had one gentleman on our committee who's a pipe-smoking libertarian, who didn't really want us to have any sort of restrictions. And, and so, I'd say this is kind of where, where we came out. But let me, let me ask Mike Chu to come up and comment, as he was a committee member.
Yes, hi, thank you. I'm Michael Chow. So, yeah, I agree with everything Nancy said, and I think it was a compromise. Some, as she said, there, at least one person that, that joined our meetings that would have liked no restrictions whatsoever. I think that, on balance, we felt that as a public health measure, this is the right direction to go in. So, we're not able to please everybody, but I think this was a reasonable compromise. And for economic hardship, if somebody was going to sell their business, you know, six months from now, it would be probably hard on them to do so, if we said that they can't transfer that license to anybody.
Well, couldn't you just say if you transfer it within a certain number of years, or... I'm just concerned, I guess my concern, this is a public health measure. We're hoping to improve the public's health, and especially among our young people who don't have access to cigarettes. So, my concern, I guess, is that how far into the future are we going to continue to have tobacco sold in this town?
I mean, I'll tell you, my concern and why I was leaned toward being somewhat cautious about how abruptly we cut things off. We heard, if you remember, a year ago, there was a warrant article that was for, like, a tobacco-free generation, that, that would have involved our merchants having to say to somebody who was, you know, if they were past a certain cutoff, but 35, oh, sorry, we can't sell tobacco to you. It was going to be a very difficult undertaking for the sellers of these products. But we also heard at that time, from particularly the gas stations in town, and we really only have a few gas stations left, saying how crucial that was to their business, to, you know, making, making a profit versus not. Yes, I drive a car, and I like to be able to put gas in occasionally, so I didn't want to drive them out of business.
Selectman Franco.
So, I have two questions, which are related. I'm wondering whether you gave any thought or consideration to whether this might be a disincentive to redevelopment of a particular parcel. So, let's say you've got a gas station that's got, sells cigarettes. The gas station portion of the business isn't making money anymore, and somebody wants to tear the gas station down, take the gas tanks out, and do something different there. But they want to also have a, sell tobacco on the ground floor. Is there any consideration to that?
Yeah, they're out. They're out. In fact, you know, we specifically say that it has to be a substantially similar business in the same location. And that was a same, same location was one of the ones the Advisory Subcommittee wanted to quibble about, but the substantially similar business, yes, we don't think if you're building a 40B on the site where a gas station used to be, that you should be able to sell tobacco products in the lobby.
Well, what about the, the station that used to be on Beacon Street, at the corner of, I don't know where, what that cross street is, I apologize. Right outside of Coolidge Corner, if you're going down the hill. It was a Sunoco station. You know, that was a redevelopment that, I think, improved that block. There was a convenience store when the gas station was there, that sold cigarettes and chewing gum and soda and everything else. We're potentially saying that, creating a disincentive to redevelop the property, because somebody wants to hang on to that business. So, you end up with gas tanks in the, in the ground, because they're making a bunch of money, but they've got a vision for, for better use for the property, that includes the convenience store aspect.
Yeah, you know, personally, I think people don't, you know, have any problem redeveloping properties in Brookline for, you know, what they consider higher and better uses, I guess. One of our fellow committee members, Dr. John Ross, has said to us on a number of occasions, tobacco is the only product sold in this country that, when used exactly as directed, causes death. It's, it's not healthy, it's particularly not healthy for young people when they start smoking. I will admit that our primary driver of those, the majority of us, I think, on the committee, was the health concern, and wanting to limit the number of opportunities for young people to, young people in particulars, to start smoking in Brookline. So, yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, if anyone builds a big building where a gas station used to be, I, I think they should think of other, other moneymakers besides tobacco.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this warrant article? Ms. Frawley.
Excuse me, I'm Regina Frawley, Precinct 16, and I can't wait for there to be no tobacco in Brookline. So, that's my bias. Having said that, I remember, sitting here a year ago for Dr. Ross's article, and it really wasn't just gas stations, it was every variety store in Brookline was out here. And they said, and I was quite stunned at this, that even in this day and age, they claimed that it was 40% of their sales. Now, and the Chamber of Commerce was here to support them, as you recall. How can we remove 40% of their income, where they said they would never make a profit without it? So, it seems like we haven't addressed, assuming for the moment that's true, and I'm not sure I believe it in this town, but let's, let's say it's true that it's 40%, and that they need it in order to pay their very high rents. How do we help them? I brought it up a year ago. We need to transition them. We need to find a way to have new products that people will come in their store and buy, and we need to help advertise that. But 40%, if that were true, taking it away, I could foresee that in some cases, that would be the end of a, that would be another empty storefront. And nobody, I haven't seen anybody who are landlords reducing their rents. How do we address that issue? We don't want to just be a residential town, and we always claim we love mom-and-pop stores. What are we going to do to address that conundrum?
Thank you.
And I'm asking a question that wasn't rhetorical. Any thoughts on that dilemma?
I think what, what this is trying to do is, it's an effective phase-out. It says anyone who currently has a permit can keep it, and then they can sell it once. So, but then, okay, so the current holder has that permit that is something of value, then the next holder, it's worth less, because they can't sell it, so.
I will, I will just say that we did hold a public hearing. We asked Economic Development to send a copy of what we were proposing out to various merchants, which I think you did, Evan. And we didn't get anyone coming to our public hearing. So, obviously, they, we didn't get the Chamber of Commerce, we didn't get the businesses. Elias Saudi was a member of our committee. He says he feels like this is a nice compromise, and he's, he's okay with it. So, it doesn't seem to draw the same concerns that the article last year did.
Let me take a crack at Ms. Frawley's question, and I think it's a good one. But I think what this involves is planning and allowing businesses. Currently, we didn't want to take away the business that these stores, these small stores have, take away their livelihood, without them having some ability to plan for the future. And this gives them that, so that they can figure out, you know, I mean, they will be able to sell tobacco now, and I probably would have cut it off after, you know, they sold the business, I mean, they, you know, because some of them, as I recall, people who came and talked to us were pretty young. I mean, they were maybe in their 30s. I think that's very young, from my perspective. And, you know, so they could be doing this for several, many, many generations, really, in 10, 20, 30 years. So, I didn't think, it's not really, in the same way, a hardship, because they're, they're going to be able to plan for the future. Anyone who buys the premises, or who gets, will know that this is not, this is not a business that they will be able to rely on, you know, ad infinitum. And so, that there will be an opportunity for long-range planning, as we like to say.
Any other comments from the board?
I have one question. In the write-up here, it says that 87 municipalities in the state, representing 24% of the state's population, have some form of cap on tobacco permits. I'm wondering if anybody else has done a proposal similar to this.
Um, I don't, oh, there was some, there's something in San Francisco, where they have different sections of town, and they've limited number of permits, like, by neighborhood. We thought that was kind of complicated. I don't know what some... Yeah, we think they might be trying to limit resale there, too. I don't know, I know there are various, some people, towns and cities, I think, have gone with, like, a, they're working on a, like, one of the proposals before us was to have a cap of, say, we have 21, we think, now, a cap of 12. So that if you had it, now, it would, you, you could keep it, but if you sold the business, it would disappear, until we got down below that 12, and then they would be reissuing them again. So, you, it kind of permanently keeps some number. We went with a different version, because we, we realized this is a long, slow approach, but eventually gets you where, where we want to be, which is no tobacco.
Selectman Green.
Just a question regarding what tobacco products include. Does that include, what do they call it, electronic smoking?
Yes. The, you know, the vaping, we learned in our committee, is not, it doesn't have the tar, so from that point of view, it is maybe, you know, not as dangerous. It does have the nicotine, so it's addictive. And it's not clear yet what all the health effects are on that one. Do you have any more info on that? Yeah. So, yes, that's included.
Okay. So, I don't, we're not going to vote on this tonight, but thank you for all your work on this. Okay, moving on on our agenda, we're ready for some licensing items, and we're only about 15 minutes late, so that's pretty good. So, the first item is Holiday Inn, CCLH LLC, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license for a change in manager, from Timothy Brett to Roberto Costello.
Good evening. My name is Angela Vasti, from the Law Office of Robert Allen, 300 Washington Street. So, with me tonight is the proposed manager, which is Roberto Costello. As you mentioned, this is the Holiday Inn. So, we're here to request a change of manager for the current liquor license, from Timothy, Timothy Brett, to Roberto Costello. So, over the last seven years, Roberto has held a number of roles within the hospitality industry, and with each role, he has been afforded more responsibility. He has been at the Holiday Inn for about three years now, and his positions have ranged from front-office supervisor role, to his most recent position, which is the manager at the Holiday Inn. So, he currently oversees a staff of about 75 employees, and under his leadership, guest and employee satisfaction has enhanced. So, given his stellar record, the owners of the hotel have a great deal of confidence that he will access, excel as the licensed manager. So, he has recently completed his TIPS certification, I have a copy with me tonight, and is excited to take on this new role. I have provided him with the electronic sale of alcoholic beverages regulations, and provided him with a hard copy as well. He's especially on notice of the responsibility to assure that no patron is over-served alcohol, and that no one under 21 is provided with alcohol at all. So, if you have any questions for me or Roberto, we'd be happy to answer.
Ms. Costello, come join at the microphone. Can you tell us some of the Brookline-specific things you've learned that you need to do?
Can you just repeat the question for me one more time?
Yeah, we have some specific regulations that may not be in other jurisdictions, like a notebook. Tell us about some of those things.
Yes, I spoke to the police officer over at the Brookline. He stopped by the hotel. We have a binder that we keep behind the bar at all times. We have six TIPS-trained employees that are with me. I have an alternate manager, Everton Parkinson, who's also gone through the TIPS certification as well. He's still wanting to get his fingerprints taken, but he's on board with that. And we have that binder there at all times. Everyone has signed it, with their date of birth and their certificate completion, so we're all set with that.
Okay. And just be aware that we take the underage provisions very seriously. We have sting operations, and hopefully, we'll never see you here again.
Yes.
Selectman Franco.
Have you ever managed a, an establishment that has a liquor license before? Have you ever been the manager, the holder of a liquor license?
I have not, no.
Have you ever worked in a restaurant, or been in proximity to an establishment that has served alcohol?
Yes, I've been in the hospitality hotel restaurant industry for the last eight years.
So, I'm looking at your resume. I see that you've, you've had a number of front-office jobs, and that you've been responsible for overall management of aspects of a hotel, but it doesn't appear as though you've ever worked in an establishment directly, in a restaurant, where alcohol has been served. So, what I'm trying to get is, how much experience do you have with the types of issues that you'll be confronted with when you're the holder of an alcohol license?
Experience in any of the hotel smaller operations, kind of all hands on deck. So, I'm familiar with the restaurant operation, the food and beverage operation. I may have the experience of being at the front office, but it's kind of covering all aspects of the hotel operation. And we're just a little Holiday Inn, it's just a small, small operation there for, for food and beverage.
Any other questions from the board? This isn't a public hearing, but I'll take any comments from the public, and I see none. We ready for a motion?
I have one other question. What is your policy about carding people? Do you card everyone who walks in?
We card everyone, yes.
Okay. So, you would card me, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I always ask whether you think I'm too old to drink.
Well, I can't tell from your hair. You can tell from mine. Okay, I'll move that we approve the application of CCLH LLC, doing business at Holiday Inn, Boston Brookline, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license, common vitueller, and entertainment license, at 1200 Beacon Street, for a change of manager as follows, from Timothy Brett to Roberto Costello. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And share votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, we won't see you again. Next item is a question of approving the application of Golden Temple for change of manager, from Jay Eric Hornfeldt to Lily Moy. manager from J. Eric Hornfeld to Lily Moy.
Good evening, but, excuse me, my name is Francis Demento, representing Golden Temple. To my left is our candidate for approval as manager under section twenty-six, or manager or personal representative. I trust that your file will show that all regulatory requirements have been met, and I trust there is nothing that will contradict my statement that the statutory requirement of good character is not contradicted anywhere in your file. You will be pleased to know as well that Ms., her name is Lily Moy, Ms. Moy has been working in various functions at the Golden Temple for the last twenty years and is conversant with most of the jobs that require knowledge in running a, require skill in running a restaurant. May I present Ms. Moy?
Hi.
Hi.
So, same questions.
We do have...
Now we'll find out if you were paying attention.
Yeah, we do have a regulatory binder that we keep with everyone's license, that TIPS safe, TIPS certified and everything, including myself. It's all on copies in that binder. We also have an incidental section of reports, so anything that's required from Brookline.
Okay, and same, same...
Same question, do you card, who do you card? Do you card everyone, or you decide, you're trying to make a judgment, it's under thirty-five or whatever?
Under thirty-two forms of ID, credit card and usually the licensed, no paper IDs.
But how does a credit card help if it doesn't have a picture?
Because of the signature, we can compare signatures and then the names, especially with students.
Okay.
Pardon me?
So you require two forms of ID?
The credit card and the ID.
And the, okay.
Really? Okay. Any other?
So the ID has the birth certificate, I mean, the birth date on it, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
The driver's license.
And the picture.
Yeah, and of course, we take our underage laws very seriously. We do stings, and hopefully we'll never see you here again.
I don't want to see you either.
So it appears you've certainly worked at the Golden Temple for a long time, as we heard. It appears you may have a second place of employment. Are you going to have this sort of second job in addition to your role at the Golden Temple, or are you going to be spending all your time at the Golden Temple?
I spend forty-plus hours at Golden Temple as it is.
This isn't a public hearing, but I'll take any comments from the public. I see none. Any other comments, questions from the board? I will...
You know, I'm just wondering, because this is a much busier bar than what they have at the Holiday Inn, so I just want to caution you, too, about being careful that none of your servers over-serve somebody.
Yeah, we do have, actually, the restaurant, we have our own policies about getting managers' approval after, like, one or two drinks, just to make sure. We have to sign off on those.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the application of Golden Temple Inc., doing business as Golden Temple, holder of an all kinds alcoholic beverage license, common vitulare, and entertainment license at sixteen fifty-one Beacon Street for a change of manager from J. Eric Hornfeld to Lily Moy. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Next item is a question of approving the application of Brookline Village Burrito, doing business as Boca Grande Taqueria, Sylvia Whitman, president for a common vitulare license at three Harvard Square. Come join us.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Sylvia Whitman, and I actually do business in Cambridge right now as a Boca Grande, and we have established here in Coolidge Corner. I will just change ownership, I'm the new owner, and hopefully I take over Bahaberes, Jimmy Bahaberes, so...
Are the hours the same as existed at Bahaberes?
Um...
So you're proposing to go from nine AM to ten PM, well, that's what the license is?
Yeah, usually we don't have customers because I don't serve breakfast, and I planned that in the future, but usually it's eleven to, I would say, ten.
Okay. This will be the same kind of operation that you did in Coolidge Corner, except smaller, I presume?
Pretty much, yeah, pretty much.
Any questions from the board?
So we're not dealing with the alcohol license?
No alcohol, no alcohol license. I don't, I don't think that establishment had a alcohol license.
Well, I'm looking at eleven-three of our packet, which has hours for the service of alcoholic beverages, so I confess I'm a little confused.
Yeah, and there's no alcoholic beverage in the vote. Okay, any questions? This isn't a public hearing, but I'll take comments or questions from the public, and I see none. We ready for a vote? Okay, I'll move that we approve the application of Brookline Village Burrito, doing business as Boca Grande Taqueria, Sylvia Whitman, president for a common vitulare license at three Harvard Square. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good luck.
Everybody wants a burrito, huh?
Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you, thanks.
Next item is a question of approving the application of H&amp;M Mart, doing business as Putterham Market, for a pledge of their liquor license and alcohol inventory to Rockland Trust Company.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Tom Truax from Salem, Massachusetts. Excuse me, on behalf of the licensee, with me is the principal of the licensee, Arpit Patel. In summation on this is Mr. Pell approached Rockland Trust for a loan to fund his inventory and to fund for a capital reserve account. As part of the loan process, Rockland Trust requires to have a pledge of the license.
Any questions from the board? This isn't a public hearing, but if any member of the public has comments on this pledge of a license, now's the time, and I see none. I'll move that we approve the application of H&amp;M Mart Inc., LLC, doing business as Putterham Market. You're going to have to, tell me your first name.
Arpit, A-R-P-I-T, Arpit.
Okay. Arpit Kumar?
Yeah, Kumar is just a suffix, so, but we don't use just the Arpit, so...
Arpit Patel, president, manager, holder of a license to sell wine and malt beverages as a retail package store and food vendor license at one eighty-nine Grove Street for a pledge of liquor license and pledge of alcohol inventory to Rockland Trust for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck. And now we're on, we're back on warrant articles, and we have first the budget amendments, Article Seven, and we're only running fifteen minutes later, so. Article Seven. Mr. Faison?
Not me, Devon Town administrator. Melissa Goff, actually.
You're just too confusing to me, you know.
Good evening, so we have two warrant articles up for review tonight. The first one is Article Seven, which is budget amendment. And so earlier this year, when we had been talking about the reserve fund transfer for the fire department truck, I was very concerned about the level of the reserve fund and whether or not it could tolerate something that substantial, it was over eight hundred thousand dollars. Knowing that, I had talked with Garrett McCabe about potentially the balance in the overlay account and whether or not there would be a surplus that we could use that would help us get through the end of the year. So we've asked the Board of Assessors to declare surplus in the overlay. Last week, they declared a million dollar surplus, and so the recommendation under Article Seven, which I'll have a prepared vote for you next week, would be to allocate that million dollars to the reserve fund in order to sustain us through the end of the year. We still have some snow and ice removal that we need to cover. We also have some cost overruns in the fire department we also need to handle as well, along with some other miscellaneous departmental expenses.
Do we have an estimate yet on the snow and ice?
So Andy and I are going to be sitting within the next couple of weeks. We should have something mid-May on that.
So this will bring us up to two million two, right? So there's currently one million two and change.
So the reserve fund right now for fiscal seventeen is two million, three forty-eight, seven thirty-seven?
The balance?
That's the current level of appropriation.
That's the, but that's not the balance, we've...
No, correct.
So the balance is a million two?
Correct.
That's what's left. So this would bring it up to two million two?
Correct.
And then the total appropriation, what'd you say, the total?
Two million, three forty-eight.
So then we will have appropriated three million...
And clearly, if the money is unexpended at the end of the fiscal year, it will revert to the general fund and be certified as fund balance or free cash.
It would fall to free cash, yeah. Anything that didn't get appropriated out of overlay would fall to free cash once the surplus has been declared.
Any comments or discussion from the board? Any comments or questions or discussion from the public? Okay, then I think we'll move on to Article Nine.
So Article Nine is the budget. The departments have been in front of the board since the financial plan came out, individually reviewing their budgets. So this presentation is just to give you an update of where we are, where the advisory committee is, and just an overview of the CIP. Since the preliminary CIP came out, there were a few changes in there as well. So the general appropriations, I should say, two hundred and fifty-four million dollars. And the department reviews, you've seen just about every department in front of you. The town departmental expenses is seventy-three million dollars, or about a two percent increase there. The school department is a one oh four point eight million dollar appropriation, which represents a three point six four increase. So a few things have happened, and I think you've gotten memos from me as these events have occurred. We had a change in the group health, once we knew for certain what our GIC rates were. They came in a little bit better than what we had planned in the budget, so we had recommendations around the allocation of that surplus there. The school department got their share per the town-school partnership, and the fire department, we were recommending, get allocated the town share of the surplus there. We made some adjustments to our debt service line based on the bond sale, and around that came some reallocation that we had to do within the CIP in order to adjust for that. The school department, Marielle Dunn was here last week talking about the school department budget, and the one adjustment in the budget table that we were going to be making is around this vocational tech assessment. I think, Neil, you raised your eyebrow at me when she was talking about this last week. So this is a philosophical conversation about where vocation ed expenses should be charged. She believes that since these are not under the control of the school committee, that they are not a school department expense. Historically, they have been covered in the school department. I have called around and talked to some other communities to see how they handle these. Arlington, for example, treats these in the same way as state assessments, where they kind of come off the top before you allocate revenue. Boston does the other end of that model, and that they have the school department absorb these as well. I think it's something that should be talked about at the town-school partnership level. There is no impact on the town side of the budget for fiscal eighteen because the school department is allocating the expense out of their existing appropriation. So when I present the budget tables for you next week, you're going to see two separate lines related to education. One, the school department appropriation, and then the second one will be the vocad allocation, and you'll see the grand total matches what we had allocated.
So is the school department proposing that the town side pick this up and will be cutting the fire department and the police department because of this item?
I think the proposal is that any growth in that line item would be split fifty-fifty. And so I think that's something that the partnership should talk about. I said, you know, there are going to be people who have a hard time understanding how a student in a classroom is not the responsibility of the school department, so...
Yeah, I have a hard time with that.
Yeah, you'll have to excuse me because I wasn't here last week, but these are students that would be in our classrooms, except instead they're going to a vocational ed program?
Correct.
Well, they're students, so that comes under the school budget.
So she's provided a lot of documentation that she believes supports their position, and that's something that I think we'll talk about at town-school partnership. As of right now, there's no impact on the town side, so it's just an allocation of the funds.
I will just say, I've actually been on the town-school partnership for many years, so before I leave, I'll give you all the benefit of my wisdom, but I think we've been very generous. And we pick up some special ed costs, and over the years, we've sort of picked up on the, for the, or shared costs in a number of areas that, you know, might be considered school expenses, and I don't, I don't think that they have taken up any of our costs to share in any way. So I really think we have to, I would urge everyone to be very cautious about additional areas that have been the school department, part of their budget, and that they're trying to shift.
Yeah, I will join my two colleagues. I know that Selectman Daley is going to leave the board and the town-school partnership. There will be a vacant seat, so whichever of the...
Are you volunteering?
Well, you know, I, there's an election on May second, so we'll see who's on this board.
Oh, yeah, I was about that.
But I would say that whoever represents the board of selectmen, the town and the town-school partnership, has a board of selectmen that is not predisposed to split growth in this line item fifty-fifty, so...
I look forward to the discussion.
What percentage of the budget, what percentage of this, of the school department budget are, is the vocad expenditures?
It's less than one percent, so...
Yeah, it's a very small item, but potentially it could grow.
Yeah, it's dollars that, you know, when we're, when we're stretching dollars everywhere, it's hard to absorb more cost if you don't have to.
How many dollars is it?
It's ninety, right now, it's ninety-four thousand dollars, so it just depends on what the fluctuation would be. You know, we probably want to have some history for the town-school partnership to look at. It's been a while since we've seen some growth in this item, so...
Have we ever had, I don't, I recall, we used to have pretty much one student every year, but now we seem to have two.
This is, yeah, this is different. This is going to Minuteman Tech out in Lexington?
Yeah, I know, but we also had more vocational programs at the UAB building than we do now. And we didn't, we don't have any, or practically none, at the elementary schools. We used to have woodworking, for instance, we don't have that anymore. So our program has shrunk educationally, and there may be more need, but that doesn't necessarily mean...
Well, but, I mean, again, that's kind of a school department decision to shrink their own vocational offerings.
I'm not saying that the town should absorb it and the schools not, I'm just saying that's a reason why there may be, because it seems to me this item has grown somewhat. Is that correct?
I believe that we... I believe that we have, you know, a student enrolled where we hadn't the year prior, so.
I don't want to make this conversation too lofty. I don't want to bring it up to 10,000-foot view, but there's a renewed effort, renewed attention on vocational education statewide, particularly as there's a shortage in skilled jobs, skilled manufacturing jobs, particularly for a very hot sector, Massachusetts, the life sciences. So not only is there the potential that the number of students enrolled in these types of programs is going to increase, the cost of providing the voc education is going to increase as well. So it's something we just need to be mindful of. I hear that it's $94,000, but, you know, it's going to grow over time, and, you know, $94,000 is $94,000.
And that's part of the reason why I think, you know, we're definitely going to put this as an agenda item on the next town-school partnership meeting, so.
Okay.
So the school CIP is still currently under review for the Advisory Committee. The Capitol Subcommittee is meeting on next Monday to talk in particular about the ninth school and the high school projects. Draft budget tables will be available next week. The full advisory will be voting on next Thursday. So that means that next week, you may not know where the Advisory Committee stands on the school, two school projects. I've got a slide at the end that shows some discrepancies between the financial plan and some of the Advisory Committee votes, not too many differences there. The House Ways and Means Budget did come out over a week ago. We did see some good news on that end, but it is a little early in the process for us to make a recommendation at this point to allocate additional funding that we saw through that budget. We've still got a little ways to go.
You anticipate that recommendation for potential additional funding would be made for the fall time meeting after this?
Correct. Yep. So we also, inclusive in Article IX is our CIP. So the CIP, the highlights of the CIP are the $1 million and a half dollars that we have for schematic design for both the ninth school and the high school. Our classroom capacity, we continue...
That's a total of $3 million.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. We have $6.2 million for classroom capacity to help us get through some of the growth that we've seen, especially related to our early education programs.
So how much of the $6.2 is leases?
Almost all of it.
Almost all of it. So you're not anticipating much of this to be used for creation of new classrooms? We're kind of done with that?
Very, very limited work that Charlie can do in regard to that.
Right, because in years past, some of that money has been used for some internal construction, but...
Right. The majority of that funding is for the leases that the schools have. So in terms of the school, two school projects, beyond schematic design, we would need debt exclusion for the remainder of the ninth school project and most of the high school project. Reminding people that we have that $35 million allocated in the out-years of the CIP to support the high school, and we still have Cypress Field allocated within the CIP that could support a high school project that includes improvements to the field. The Sewell Athletic Field Project is exclusively the debt exclusion. These are some of the major projects that we've talked about with some of our town departments. We had a lot of discussion at the Advisory Committee level on the Coolidge Corner Improvement Projects. As of right now, the recommended appropriation is currently what the full committee has voted. I know there was some discussion about whether or not that would change. As of right now, I haven't seen any revised proposal around that.
What kinds of things?
So the windows were very controversial.
Oh, that's the library.
Yes.
Okay.
They're doing some improvements inside the building, an elevator.
If you can have that slide anywhere, add the word "library."
Library, yep, sure. And then we have some improvements in the out-years for Lars Anderson Park and Cypress Playground as well. These are kind of our ongoing CIP investments.
I'm sorry, could you just go back to that slide for a second?
Sure.
Cypress, okay, so Cypress, $2.6 million is in the fiscal '19, but the design money is in...
'19.
'19 or '18?
'19.
Okay.
Because after the schematic design is done, then you'd go into the actual project itself.
Right, right, right. Okay, thank you.
These are our ongoing CIP items that we have. We've been talking with Kevin Stokes about the change in IT in terms of less reliance on CIP, more pressure on the operational budget. We've talked to the fire department about their apparatus schedule, and we always talk with Charlie about some of the energy conservation projects that he does. This is just a reminder for everyone on the way our CIP works, in terms of we have 6% of prior year net revenue, and then we add free cash on top of that to try and get to a goal of 7.5% for the CIP. So out of the revenue finance piece, we've got $9.7 million. Out of that, $3.1 million is coming from the tax base, and then $6.6 million is coming from free cash or other available funds. So we're actually at 8.7 instead of that 7.5% target. This slide here shows the allocation of free cash and how it hits the certain different levels of priority that the town has. The first is to maintain our budget reserve. A piece of that, of our budget reserve comes from the property tax, another piece of it comes from free cash. We're also trying to make sure that our reserves are at a certain level, so that we're at least at 10% of prior year net revenue. When our liability fund, we have a target for our liability fund to be 1% of prior year net revenue. The capital improvements, that 3.69 number that you see right here, that is the number that's needed to get you to that 7.5% per the policy. And then we were also able to allocate an amount for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we did have a lot of discussion at the Advisory Committee, because that was a pretty significant growth in that line item. But Roger Blood did a really good job kind of articulating the need for the fund, especially given the declining fund balance right now, because we've done some work around some of the, you know, Dummer Street and other affordable housing projects.
And nothing's changed here since...
Nope. So the recommendations that we made in the financial plan have remained the same, including allocating additional funding to OPEB's and for the pension fund as well. This is our debt finance portion of the CIP. So we have $12.7 million of debt service, and $9.7 million of that is from the general fund. We've got $1 million roughly from the old high school debt exclusion that will roll off in about a year. And then we have $2 million from enterprise funds. So this is where we are with the Advisory Committee. We don't have votes yet on the $1.5 million for schematic design for the ninth school or the high school. We just had a meeting downstairs for the discussion about the human resources and town council budgets. It was a pretty good conversation. I think we're going to be meeting internally, just to talk a little bit more about it, but at this point...
Did they vote?
No, no vote at this time. I think that we need to internally make a recommendation that then they can take action on, so. The Advisory Committee did take an action on the town clerk budget. So we have included expenses to accommodate an additional election in anticipation of an off-cycle election for both the ninth school and high school debt exclusions. And the Advisory Committee at this point has reduced that budget by $80,000, but they have not allocated it anywhere yet, so I'm not sure if that's going to hold, or if they're going to plan on allocating it somewhere else or restoring it. I'll see if I can get more information on that before they actually come up to their vote, hopefully in time for you guys to take it down.
Well, I'd like to remind this Board, because I probably won't be here by the time you get to that vote, but you can go ahead and vote for that even budget, even though the Advisory Committee is doing something different.
Of course. Do we have the schedules for the school votes? What's the current thinking on when we would need a debt exclusion override, or should we wait a little while?
So the Board, I think it really is about the Board's perspective in terms of how much lead time they feel is needed in advance of putting a question on the ballot. The way that the schedule had been carved out well over a year ago, that we've been continually telling people it's a highly ambitious schedule, is that the schematic design funding would happen, it usually takes around six months or so for schematic design, maybe five if we're really on schedule. And then sometime before, sometime around then, whether it be while you're still in the middle of schematic design, or whether you're waiting for the end of it, there would be enough information that would then inform the voters about what kind of project that you would have. And so I think we've said fall/winter might be that timeline, but we haven't definitively said, you know, when it would actually be.
So I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. If we don't have this debt exclusion in the fall, and we wait until presumably May, there's the potential that we're going to have to stop a project, stop working on a project midway through, because we simply don't have the money to do the, to transition from schematic design to actual design of the building.
Correct. After schematic design, we would be relying on debt exclusion funds going forward.
So we would, potentially, and again, you said it was an ambitious schedule. Complete schematic design, then have to wait for up to six months to get the appropriation for actual design work of the high school with the ninth elementary school.
All depending on when the schematic design concluded. We had to change the plan for the high school. Originally, we had anticipated that $35 million of capacity we'd be able to use in fiscal '19, but there was too much disruption in the CIP in order to do that, so we delayed tapping into that funding source until it actually, until the capacity was actually there.
Which is 20 or...
23.
Oh.
So the, but even so, fiscal '18 was never a year that we had been anticipating that we would be needing to go beyond schematic design within that same year. So if we are really on track, that was never anything that was in the original plan.
I'm having trouble figuring out how this would work if the $35 million is moved over to fiscal year '23, you said?
Yep.
That seems awfully far to me. It seems like...
So we'll be borrowing in phases? So we'll be borrowing in phases. So for example, for the devotion school, a year ago, we borrowed $10 million, and that was sufficient for last year. This year, we just borrowed $33 million, and that was sufficient. Next year, we'll be borrowing 49, so we'll be sequenced in the same line.
Yeah, I understand the staggered borrowing idea, but the question is whether, how much the authorization has to be on the debt exclusion? Is it up to, it includes the $35 million?
No, so, well, it would be the entirety of the project beyond schematic design. You'd authorize for the entire amount.
Okay. And so then, when you get to fiscal year '23, you would use some of the borrowing from the CIP as opposed to the debt exclusion?
And if you, I mean, the sequence, if you did want to change the sequence, then you would be doing that at the sacrifice of other projects within the CIP.
Sounds like, yeah, yeah, it's complicated, and I think we're going to have to kind of work it through and see how the timings line up, so there's a lot of moving pieces here.
Yeah, I mean, it might be that you don't want to hold that election until the regular town election, but I think it's somewhat risky to not have the option to have that election scheduled.
Right.
Well, especially, I think the critical, I think, information is that the ninth school is actually further along, because the ninth school, you know, had an initial feasibility study last year, even though it involved three sites, and then moved into schematics, but they were much further along in terms of feasibility.
Now it's feasibility.
What?
Last year was the site selection study, and this year we're in feasibility.
And this year is feasibility, but still, they're further along, I think, in feasibility, because they had the site selection and did a lot of the feasibility work then. On three sites, yes, but the...
Well, last month, we picked one option of the several that had been presented to us, so they are moving ahead pretty rapidly, you know.
Right. Okay. So that's the update that I have. Obviously, with department heads coming in front of you, I can answer some general questions if there's anything. This is the public hearing for Article IX as well.
Okay. This is the public hearing, so if anyone from the public wishes to speak on any budget item, now's your time. Ms. Farley?
Regina Farley, Precinct 16. And thanks, Ben, for mentioning that you're up for reelection, so I hope you'd mention that you're coming tomorrow night to the South Brookline candidate night, and you'll be very welcome. Having said that, I agree...
Well done, well done with the plug.
I agreed with every word you said. It caught my attention that, and I'm not sure how the $94,000 breaks down for the student going out to Minuteman, but it includes transportation as well. So is that on top of it? I don't know the answer, but it's a question. It's stated right in it that for the student, as well as the transportation, would be on the town side. And beds on the money, the vocational schools are back, they're coming back. There's, there are jobs, and there's a need, and I don't think this will be the camel's nose, this will be the first person to go. And we sit here, and I've heard you, Chair, say, almost a million dollars goes to Norfolk County, and I'm not sure we even have one student there anymore. We had one a few years ago, but I think she graduated.
We had one for a number of years, but we don't, she's not there anymore.
I can't hear you, what?
I said, we did have one for several years.
Yes, and she graduated, so they did something okay, and she's in college. But we're still paying the million, and I could see this. It's a growth opportunity, it's a growth industry happening right now, and I really do urge you to give some serious thought. I always hear acknowledged that 63 cents of every dollar goes to the schools. This is going to up it. You can't complain about a million to Norfolk and not realize you're already doing 1/10 of that for one student. So it's going to have a domino effect, I think. And on behalf of the taxpayers and the seniors who are on fixed incomes, who've lived here forever, such as myself, you really have to think about the fairness of that. And no, I was at the meeting, the Subcommittee meeting, where Ms. Dunn said, I wrote it down as fast as I could, that she never removes a line item, but she has removed a cost and transferred it to us. I challenged her with humor on that, because I'm trained in looking at bureaucracies from a political, analytical basis, and especially the military and the Pentagon, and they never remove a line item, and they brag about it, and if they have extra money, they find a way to spend it. So at a time when the administration of the schools have increased the number of body counts upstairs in the administration, they're switching over a very significant expense, which is guaranteed. It's not hypothetical, it will grow. And we'll be proud of our students who are going to be learning their skills. But maybe the bigger conversation is, how do we bring it back to Brookline, where so many people learned how to be a good tradesperson and who made a living at it? So I do urge you to think twice about this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the budget? So the goal is next week?
Next week, I'll have a prepared vote for you. Unfortunately, you won't know where the Advisory Committee lands with their vote.
Well, do we care? We care.
It's always good to have one recommended vote in front of town meeting, so.
Right, as much as possible.
Yes.
Let me just clarify something in my own mind. This issue of who pays for the voc-ed student, currently, the school department does.
So in fiscal '18, we are just identifying the costs, but the funding for the voc-tech in fiscal '18 is coming out of the school department's revenue allocation.
Right.
It's just separated out as a separate line item.
Right. Right, and Mary Ellen Dunn is suggesting that the town take that over, but that's not...
That the growth in that line item be absorbed 50/50.
Right, but that's not happened, and it's not something that the, that has been voted on or in any way implemented.
No, but I think it's something that the town-school partnership should be weighing in on.
Okay. When Selectman Green comes back, I'm going to propose that we vote on Article 7. That's the budget adjustment, just so we can...
Knock one off?
Knock one off, so to speak. Are you folks here for the special town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, why don't I just, why don't we move that up? So, that'll be a quick item, I think. I was wondering why you guys were here. So we under, I understand some folks have been gathering signatures. So we have a special town meeting within the annual to consider a resolution, and I'll read the title, "Resolution in Support of Congressional Investigation Regarding the Impeachment of Donald J. Trump." That should be a very interesting discussion at the town meeting, and the town clerk has certified 200 signatures, so we are obligated to hold this special town meeting, and I will thank the petitioners for doing it in a timeframe where we can do it within the annual, so it doesn't cost the town any extra money. Thank you. Because if you, if you brought it to us a few days earlier, we would have had to convene town meeting earlier, and it would have cost us or later, you know. So I think it's great that we're doing this within the annual, so that's good. So, I guess...
So you have a memo in your packet from me that describes the process once we get a petition that has been certified by the town clerk. So the Board of Selectmen, per the bylaws, are able to waive the requirements of Section 2.1.2 and 2.1.3 of the bylaws around opening of the warrant and the filing of articles. So I have a prepared vote for you that allows you to call a special town meeting, waive the requirements, open the warrant, insert this warrant article, and then close the warrant.
Wow, we're going to be busy in a minute.
So that's actually part of the memo that should be in your packet. 15-1, at the bottom of the page, outlines the vote, and also includes the one warrant article that was submitted per the citizen petition.
Okay. Any questions or discussion of this special town meeting?
I just want to note that Ms. Colerick and her supporters collected well in excess of the 200 required signatures. They got 429, so it shows hard work, and...
And I'll bet you didn't have a lot of trouble getting the signatures. Not in this town.
I guess I don't want, I don't like to be the, the...
You're going to poop our party.
Yeah, as Governor Dukakis always says, I don't want to be the skunk at the garden party, but my question is, is this a distraction? Let me finish. Impeachment requires a vote of the House of Representatives, and then removal through the Senate. House of Representatives currently is not very favorable to impeachment. That could change, even with a Republican majority, but that's speculative. And in the meantime, you know, we have an election coming up in 2018, where, you know, it seems to me that the energy and the resources being used to push an impeachment process that would at best result in Mike Pence being the president could be used to knock on doors, to get names, to call, to call people, make sure they get out to vote, to actually make it possible through the shifting of the House of Representatives to have an impeachment. I just think this is a distraction, one of the many little bright objects that the Trump administration throws out there for us to go after, to distract us from doing real hard work that will actually get something done. Just my opinion, I may be wrong.
Well, we're going to have to have a public hearing on the substance of this town meeting.
No, I understand, I just...
The board is still obligated to actually respond to the petition as well, so.
I'm going to disagree with Bernard, because I think the man is actually in violation of the emoluments clause, and so, yes, I don't actually think that our Republican-led House of Representatives is going to vote to impeach, but I think it's an issue that needs to be raised. I, you know, I, in addition to some of the things they've mentioned in this, you know, by constantly going to his for-profit club, Maro Lago, or whatever it's called, and having, you know, appearing, apparently, he gets his, you know, people can get their pictures taken out on the golf course with him, and he appears at the Christmas party and everything. All of this is enhancing, enhancing his profits at that facility, and, you know, is another kind of egregious example. So, you know, I, I think he is in violation of the emoluments clause, and to call him on that, even if the Republican-led Congress may not vote to do that, you know, I think you need to make it public that, that...
It's pretty public already.
Yeah, but he's, he's pretty flagrant, is what, is my answer, and, you know, to, he's managed to get away with not producing his taxes, to get away with not divesting himself of his things, you know. People need to make these issues more public, because I don't think he should be getting away with, with any of it.
So I look forward to hearing about the arguments why this is an appropriate or inappropriate warrant article at a future Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Right, where it's a little before nine o'clock. So why don't I propose the vote, actually get this warrant going, and then at another Board of Selectmen meeting earlier in the evening, hopefully, we can have a spirited debate on the merits of the warrant article. So I'm going to move that we call a special town meeting on Tuesday, May 23, 2017, at 8:00 p.m. at the high school auditorium, to waive the requirements of Section 2.12 through 2.14 of the town's bylaws, to open and close the warrant, and to insert in said warrant the following article, which is, the full text of which is on pages 15-2 to 15-3. It's entitled, and it is one article, entitled "Resolution in the Support of Congressional Investigation Regarding the Impeachment of Donald J. Trump," and I will not read the rest of it, but it's entered into the record by reference. So, all those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
For the sole procedural step of allowing the special town meeting, I'll vote aye.
You can record that as an aye. And the chair votes aye. So we will have a special town meeting to talk about the impeachment of Donald Trump. Should be very interesting.
Next time, we're going to go for four nights.
One tiny thing, come to the microphone.
And I reserve the right to respond.
All right, let's see if I can get the right response.
Just tell us who you are.
I am Barbara Kelman. I'm a Brookline resident of 30-some years, and I want to say two words. May 17th, we have the guys behind this resolution coming to speak here. We've reserved the Pierce Auditorium, and we invite you all to come, because they have better answers to your questions than even I could give you tonight, and mine would be terrific. But please come on May 17th. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we have a couple of other items.
Did you want to go back to Article 7, or do you want to wait?
Oh, yeah, let's, let's vote on Article 7, and that's the budget amendments, the 2017 budget amendments, which is, at this point, it's a reserve fund, it's...
Relegating a million dollars from the overlay reserve account to the reserve fund.
Into the reserve. Okay. So I will move a motion, a recommendation of favorable action on Article 7. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay.
Thank you.
We knocked one off. We actually accomplished something. Wow. Okay, so let's look at what's on our agenda.
So Article 11, I think Nancy was going to look, Nancy Heller was going to be speaking with Neil Gordon a little bit further about this one. Wasn't sure if it would be ready in time for a vote, but we put it on here just in case you were.
Yeah, we've done some follow-up. You know, I've, I think he's done some more work since I talked him, he's not here now, and I had, I had spoken to him. You know, it's fine with me if we want to go ahead and vote it, and...
Do, so this is...
I haven't, I haven't really absorbed what the, I don't think the advisory committee, is this the version we have here, is the advisory committee's version?
It should, and it's also, should be in your binders as well.
The 412, it's dated.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the latest?
Yeah, nothing, I haven't gotten any changes since last week.
Okay. All right, well, then, the changes that I had discussed with him, he had made what changes he felt needed, so. I think it's tough to read this thing, and because of all the, I always find it difficult to read the things that have these so many crossouts, and I'm not sure who's crossed out what. So if we voted it tonight, I'd probably abstain, just because I'd like to see a non-redlined copy.
A clean version, sure.
If I could, and I would feel more confident that I was voting for something that I understood better than if, you know, this, to me, this is...
Well, is that a doable request?
Yep, I'll have that ready for you next week.
I'd rather hold off, too.
Okay.
I'd rather hold off, too, just on the principle that we need, you know, clean copies to be able to make competent judgments.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so the goal is to vote, to really vote this next week. Okay. 16 is sole lease for the Runkle School.
No changes since we reviewed it last week. It was just a week delay after the public hearing on this article.
This one was pretty straightforward.
We should vote it.
Yeah. Any other? Sure.
I just attended the subcommittee on this. Regina Frawley, town meeting member, Precinct 16. Rebecca Stone recommended a changed, modification of the word "shall." She felt that that could be very directive later, and I do believe the subcommittee was rewriting some of the wording just so that it would give more options and not feel as compelling under the future. As she pointed out, we don't know what economics are going to be, we don't know what populations are going to be. She wanted to preserve that by removing the word "shall." So I just want to bring that to your attention. That was just tonight, that I was at a meeting earlier.
The word "shall" isn't even in there.
I think she made quite a compelling case, and they were rewriting it.
Are, the Runkle School solar?
The solar, yeah. Oh, no, the, I'm talking about the, the high school and the...
Oh, you're thinking of the net zero.
High school and the high school.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, that's the next one.
Never mind.
Okay, so Article 16, this is solar on the, authorizing a lease for solar on the Runkle School. I'll move a recommendation of favorable action. All those in favor, and then the motion would be voted, voted the town will authorize not to...
And strike the or acting.
And then, you're right, and strike. So you're, so you're changing the form into a motion.
And I assume that Bon Council's been asked to not give an opinion, but at least to say, go ahead.
I spoke to town council the very next day and made sure that he would be running this by him, so, yes.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion for a favorable recommendation, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So then, now the next one.
Article 21, I don't have an advisory committee vote just yet on that. I think they're still working on that, but I know that they had their latest attempt, which should be in your packet.
Yeah, I, I had some back and forth with Wernaloe, and I indicated that, is this the one where I suggested that we...
You want to have the advisory committee do the wordsmithing?
Yeah, 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 that we would, okay. It's kind of merging into, yeah, so I think, especially for a resolution, it would be good to, if they're on the verge of coming up with their latest final, it's probably better that we just wait, so we just have to vote at once.
Ms. Frawley is correct, there is a "shall" in this one.
We'll flag the word "shall" and make sure the advisory committee's aware of that change as well.
Okay, now Article 20.
Article 20, the petitioners here, if you can explain where we are with advisory as well.
John Harris, precinct, town meeting member, precinct eight, and co-chair of Climate Action Brookline and petitioner of Warren Article 20. The latest thing that's happened is last Thursday, the advisory committee voted on a amended warrant Article 20, and that was sent to you folks at some point in the...
Yeah, we have it, yeah.
Can I print it up, copy it?
No, we don't need it.
Where do we have it?
It's on, it's in our binder, top of the binder. Oh, it's, oh, it's...
Put it on the table?
It's the first, the first thing in the binder.
First thing in the binder. And this is, ours is Friday, dated Friday, is this something sooner?
Can I have a copy of whatever you brought?
Sure.
Just to make sure.
So this was submitted twice by two different members of the advisory committee, but the versions are the same.
Okay. So we have a Friday version.
We added it to our table, too.
Well, honestly, the advisory committee, the Human Services Subcommittee of Advisory did the bulk of the red lines that you see, or black lines actually, on this page. The, the changes that the full advisory made, and then, and then voted for that version unanimously, the Subcommittee, and then the full advisory, the main changes they made, if you look in the resolves, number, resolve number two and resolve number four, the original wording says agrees to file, et cetera, and they wanted to change that to the word commits to file. And as a matter of fact, Selectman Wyszynski, that might have been a concern of yours, if I remember, when, when we were here a week or so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the word commits...
Here's, I remember our thinking now, which was, you had mentioned a concern about the word, the word agrees...
Yeah.
But you did not mention a concern on number five, where it originally said commits? And so we said, hey, that, we assumed that meant that you were okay with commits on the others as well.
Uh, like number four?
Yes.
There's some concern about the date, too.
Yeah.
It's too soon.
Yeah, I, well, commit to a goal of a, you know, something like that.
I've had some discussions with the people who were involved in the first development of the first climate action. That took 18 months to maybe even longer, and so, you know, we're already almost to the middle of 2017, and I'm worried that, given everything else we're doing, we don't have the bandwidth, and, you know, unless we, so that's my concern. You know, I support the goal in the sense that it needs to get done, but I want to make it realistic, and I want people to be, you know...
How about commits to be...
You're talking about in, in Item 4, the resolved in 2018.
Commits to develop it in 2018. Commits to develop it in, in 2018, and I'm just not sure that the timetable is...
Well, just a reminder, number one, that the, the year 2018, we didn't choose that. The, the unstated agreement of, of the people who sign on to the, to the formal Paris Agreement and the non-state actor zone is that five-year, five-year reporting periods begin in 2018, and then every five years after that. And so that's why, that's where the, the 2018 came from, to put us in sync with everybody.
What about if we say commits to begin developing a revised plan?
Well, just to counterpropose, we've, I spoke with Werner and, and some other folks who were involved in that committee as well, and part of the concern was that, an undue burden that it would place on the planning department. And although planning, one FTE was intended as to work on sustainability issues and planning, that a lot of 40Bs and other issues have taken up too much of the time. So we've actually had a number of discussions in our, in our group at Climate Action Brookline, and what, first of all, I was told that the, the 2002 plan was done 99 percent, quote-unquote, by volunteers and not by town staff. And I would also, if you look in the, in the language of the 2012, it does commit, it calls for an, an assessment or an updating in 2014. And here we are several years after without that happening. And then finally, the, what, what we were going to propose and will, is that the, the way to do, to carry forward this Number 4 is that the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee, because it has to be an official town submission, that the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee appoint an ad hoc subcommittee to be authorized until, from now or town meeting date until the last day of 2018, to, with the task of doing an update of the 2012 plan. And I have already contacted two members of the, who were involved in the 2012, to get a, you know, to get the kind of computer template, and it turned, I think it's a Word document, so to facilitate the kind of, you know, practical rewriting of that. And we've also already begun initiatives just...
How about this, Mr.?
I'm not saying it don't get done, John, I just don't want to force the issue in terms of, if there's something that's still straggling out there, I don't want us to be, you know, running to, to get something done that we could walk and do it more thoughtfully and thoroughly, and that's all I'm saying.
How about this?
That's the, part of the problem, I think, is when you say to, commits to develop a revised town plan, you can set up your volunteers or your subcommittee to write something.
Yes.
But it has to go through, to become a town plan...
Yes.
It's got to go through, you know, the departments in town, it's got to go through the Board of Selectmen, you know, the advisory committee's going to want to take a look at it, so...
We may get it done, but we may not, and I just want us to have some flexibility.
How about this? How about if we...
Begin to develop.
How about we commit to a goal of developing a revised town plan during?
Fine. Great.
Okay. Thank you.
To a goal.
Goal of developing a revised...
Yeah. Yeah.
And then if we get whacked with 40Bs...
Sure, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. But remember, there are those of us in town, Climate Action Brookline being a pretty primary example.
Right. Got it.
Where 40Bs are not our, our field, really.
Right.
Yes, except that the staff person who, who comes to the ad hoc committee, and we have that in the case of Net Zero, where we have partnered with CAB on that, we still have a staff person who is, you know, from, from the planning department. So that's the limitation in terms of the workload of that department, and that's my...
So what we have is the, the advisory committee language with Number 4 changed to commits to a goal of developing a revised plan, blah, blah, blah. Can we vote that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. It's Selectmen Franco's motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does, I'm sorry, does this mean we go back to advisory with this, or?
Yep. Now, it's up to them whether they want to come to agreement with us.
Okay.
The ball is now in their court.
Otherwise, we have a floor fight.
Bring your tomatoes.
As I always say, I think town meeting likes a good...
Good fight.
Good argo-bargo.
We're hoping the town meeting agrees on the visual climate change and not on procedural.
Yep.
Right. Okay, Article...
Article 23, I don't have any advisory committee motion on that. The minutes from last week's meeting are in your packet, if the board feels that they're ready, or if they would like to wait and see what develops in the advisory committee end.
I, I have a problem with Article 23, is, now, I, I like the initiative of the students that they would bring an article, and I don't want to do anything to dissuade students and other interested citizens from bringing articles, but I have a problem with a local option gas tax. I, I wouldn't have a problem with raising the gas tax by three cents to fund transportation improvements.
Statewide.
Statewide.
Statewide, I, I feel the same way. I feel like it's kind of hard on our businesses, our few remaining gas stations, to make them so much pricier than gas stations elsewhere.
Is there legislation at the, at the State House to raise, raise the gas tax in general?
I'm sure there is.
Yes, there is.
It always gets defeated, right?
Right.
Well, it was raised, and then it went, legislature raised it, and then it, then there was a ballot initiative which failed, which rolled it back. So that doesn't count a lot of legs.
Aside the fact that we're not going to get statewide legislation, I agree with Selectmen Heller, Daley.
It's the second time you mixed up the Nancys.
No, that was someone else messing up.
Okay. I'm tired.
That...
We're interchangeable.
Like me and Ben.
You both, you both have the same amount of hair.
So what was I saying now? Whatever you said, I agree.
You're saying it's, it's better to do it at the state level, but the problem is, is that because it's been rolled back at the ballot box, and we're never going to get it at the state level. So if we want it, we're going to have to have this.
I, I think also, what I heard Selectwoman Daley say was that, you know, it's unfortunate that, you know, we encourage students to, you didn't say this, I'm saying this, we encourage students to get involved in the process, but I think that it's really important that we also focus on, you know, getting them to understand the broad issues and broad implications of, you know...
Wade, the, the difficulties that it might pose for, for gas station owners.
You know, in some ways, I know this is going to be a stretch for an analogy, but in some ways, this is like tobacco. It's not, you know, gasoline is not good for the planet, as tobacco is not good for your health. And so the question is, you know, we are going to limit tobacco in this town, and it's going to do some, it's going to have some limitations on the business owners, and we've tried to figure out a way to spread it out and make it not look as painful.
Mitigate it, yeah.
In the same way, you know, gasoline-powered cars are damaging the environment, we know that. People are buying electric vehicles more readily, and, you know, all this other stuff, but, so in the meantime, you know, what do we do? I mean, somebody has to, we have to, we have to take some measures to promote the environment and promote the, the use of renewable energy and not carbon burning and, and not fossil fuels. So I can make an argument, I mean, I, I can see all sides of it, and I, but, you know, it's, it's very few cents on the dollar, really.
Yeah, but it's interesting, just reading through the resolution, that they're acknowledging that Brookline is currently committed to upgrades necessary to improve safety and comfort pedestrians, bicyclists, and mass transit users. And then they say, but we're constrained by available revenue and other budgetary considerations. But, you know, I think we've been moving along pretty well on bicycle lanes and some of those improvements. So, I, I mean, the, I think what you're getting at, and part of what they're intending, is a punitive thing for gasoline users. It's, as much as it's a, while we need revenue for other things, it's also a kind of punitive thing to discourage gasoline use.
In Brookline.
In Brookline.
So let's not lose sight of the fact that passage of this resolution doesn't ultimately mean that the gas tax is going to be, the local option gas tax is going to be implemented in Brookline. It's got to be passed by the state, and then it's got to come back...
As a whole new provision, eh?
No, this is, my understanding is that this legislation, Senate 1551, would simply give the community the option to accept the local option tax. So it would at the very least have to go through town meeting again for acceptance of the provision of state law, whereupon the local option tax would be added. There's, so this is the first step in a process.
So you're right, you're right, you know.
But I'm still philosophically opposed to this kind of local option tax. I think, I think it would, it should be a statewide tax, and I would, I would vote for that, but not for a local option tax on, on this.
I don't disagree with you that it would be better if it was a statewide tax. It's not, yeah, we, we tried that, it got repealed, so if we want to, if we philosophically believe there needs to be increased investment in our transportation infrastructure, bike and pedestrian, automobile, mass transit, this is the, this is what's in front of us, and this is the option.
Okay. So do we want to vote on this? Or do, I'm willing to do a vote.
Did you say that the advisory...
I don't have a vote yet from the advisory committee.
They've not heard this yet?
No, not for the full committee.
Well, let's, yeah, let's wait and see what they...
Okay.
So kick the can down the road.
Yeah, we're good at that.
Useful things to say, yeah.
Okay. That's, I believe we've completed our agenda. So, thank you.